Welcome to tonight's meeting of June 24th, 2024. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Welcome to tonight's meeting of June 24th, 2024. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being patient. We were on an executive call. Sorry that we're running a little bit late, but we welcome you to the city council meeting of June 24th, 2024. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of the quorum that are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect while all meetings are in session as well as during breaks and transitions between meetings. We want to be sure I'll feel welcome and remind attendees there is an expectation that meetings shall not be disrupted and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. No attendee shall engage in audible expressions of support or opposition for any speaker. Signs and placards are prohibited and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not the aisles, nor shall the doorways be blocked. Roll call, please. Counselor Carmelia.
Present.
Counselor Demont.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Counselor Haat.
Present.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Mayor Protem Nermela. And Counselor Ireland.
Here.
Mayor, can I make a motion to excuse the Mayor Protem from the meeting tonight?
Sir, second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to excuse Mayor Protem from our meeting this evening. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That also brings me to item 10C on your agenda tonight. It has been removed and it will be on the July 8th meeting. That brings us to the minutes of June 10th, 2024. Move to approve, Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the minutes of the June 10th, 2024 meeting as presented.
Counselor Carmelia.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the minutes of June 10th, 2024. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That brings us to public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with city council. Each participant will be given no more than three minutes on any topic they choose. Public comment is not intended to be a back and forth discussion. This evening, the city clerk has informed me that we received 17 emails, one voicemail by the deadline, which has been transcribed and posted to the online agenda packet and forwarded directly to city council. The city clerk has also told me we have 56 persons signed up tonight. That's the reason we have cut from five minutes to three minutes, and I will let you know when your time expires. Would you please call the first person? The first speaker is Milton Garland. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Milton Garland, and I live near the intersection of 99th and Lowell, where I've lived for over 35 years. I'm here tonight because I understand there are improvements to be made at the local Squires Park, park, and so as, as I support the improvements for the park. However, I was just informed recently that there's a, a change, and that change would include a dog park in this enclosed space. And so I'm speaking in opposition to that aspect of the update. The park is listed in the, in the, in the overview. It's one of the most popular parks. It's because it's, it's safe and it's quiet. And it also has the most popular pavilion. And that's because I think, I live near the park, and that's because it, these children of, of the participants of the pavilion, they're, they feel safe in this space. It's a key recreation focal point for the community because I think it's clean and well-maintained. The dog park would change the nature of this park. And so I, as much as I support the, the updates, the change in the nature of the park, I oppose. Right now, there are moms with young infants that use the park. They come together in groups and so they can help each other to watch the children. There are yoga groups that meet in the morning. There, of course, are two playgrounds for children to use. And all of these, in all of these areas, I'm pointing out how this dog park would conflict with the current activities. There's a summer camp that's, they use the park there in the summertime. The buses come up and they eat under the pavilion and they play in the fields. Families, there are family homes surrounding this park on four sides. And so with the noise of the dogs, both in the dog park and exciting the dogs in us and the surrounding homes, the noise would be, would change the nature of not only the park, but the community. The pavilion, as I mentioned, is one of the most popular aspects. And also, there is an elementary school surrounding the park on the east side. And all of these areas, I think the dog park aspect would change the, the flavor of the community. So I, as much as I agree with the updates, I do not agree and I would oppose the aspect of the dog park. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ray Record. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Ray Record, and my wife and I have lived for 10 years next to the Westminster Open Hills. We actually boarded the property. I'm an unashaped dog lover. However, and it's a big however, when we moved there, it was rare to see more than one dog in person at a time just out of our picture window. A recent guest looked out that same window and commented, wow, it's like you live next to an ant farm. For what it's worth, I have bachelor's and master's degree in wildlife ecology from UC Davis and a 30-year career in wildlife management. We have stopped using the park for our own dog for his own health. He runs from one dung pile to another sniffing and licking, and I don't know, well, I can imagine what diseases and parasites he might be exposed to. We've raised each of our golden, we've raised gold for four to five years. Each one has lived to age 15, and it's because we've been careful with their health, and we can't do that anymore. 10 years ago, we purchased a home, and we're excited to border a natural area of the Who's. We have now watched the destruction of the Western Hills open space because of the extreme use of dogs. The Who's conditions report documents extreme damage can, that was, that was, that was done by trampling, defecation, urination, and the presence of E. coli. Plus, we have watched the invasion of many noxious weeds and speeds. Species of wildlife have been excluded because of that. The complete lack of control and management of the area is wrong. I've worked with many ranchers and farmers during my career as wildlife biologist, and I was always struck by their care and their stewardship of the land. What I see here, frankly, is a lack of that. And I am very saddened to say that we may not be able to live here anymore because that open space that we so cherish has been destroyed. I really hope that the council will see fit to not allow further destruction and more than that, just to work on fixing some of what's been done. There's my three minutes.
Thank you.
Certainly.
The next speaker is Gail Record. Welcome. There is a button at the bottom left of that podium that raises it up if you'd like it a little higher. No, no, the, the, it's on the podium.
I'm sorry. I don't hear well.
Oh.
I don't, I don't know what you're saying. Oh. Thank you. Hi, my name is Gail Record. I'm a Westminster homeowner, and I live on the border of the Who's, the Westminster open space. This is a very emotional topic for me. We've had dogs for a very long time, and it used to be a good experience going out at the dog park. Until you have an older dog, it gets jumped on by a younger dog and actually put to the ground. That's very disturbing. But more than that, I am very concerned about the destruction that I've seen in that area that I've witnessed over the last 10 years. It's completely destroyed the area. It used to be a beautiful area, short grass prairie, filled with navy plants, birds, wildlife. Yes, the dog owners used it and they enjoyed it, but it was not trampled. It was not completely overrun as it is now, but if they use it, has exploded. It's because a destination place for the whole Denver greater area. Today, there are more weeds than there are native plants. The birds and the wildlife have almost gone. You never see them anymore. We used to see them a lot. When the wind blows, as it often does, it creates these dust storms. I don't know if you've ever been out there, but the, the erosion of the area, just the, the bills of, of, of dust that are coming off that area is just awful, and we've allowed that. The paths that used to be nice little small paths are now the size of highways. There used to be concise little paths. Now there's a path like every 10 feet. I can't even make it from my yard out to the first little path because the weeds are this tall and they're stickery. I can't even go through them. I watch dogs run along my fence line. They defecate right along it. The owners often do not pick that up. They urinate through my yard. All the weed seeds flow right into my yard. You would not believe the weeds that I never had in my yard, and they are there now. It makes it not a very pleasant place for me to be in my backyard. In fact, I can smell the dogs, the urine and the feces up on my deck. I no longer can take my dog out there. I just don't feel like it's a safe place. In fact, my vet actually didn't recommend it anymore. She said, don't do it. There are just too many potential diseases out there. It's just totally irresponsible caretaking of one of Westminster's greatest natural resources. And we, in this day and age of protecting our environment, we are allowing the whole area to become decimated.
Thank you, and your three minutes are up. The next speaker is Louis Corchado. Welcome.
Good evening, council. Louis Corchado here to talk about an issue very important. And in fact, it's very important to everyone behind me, and I hope they know that they're going to have the chance soon to vote on how many wards they can have in Westminster and how many representatives you get in your ward. That's what's being drafted. Just so you know, I'm here tonight to respectfully ask council for more action earlier than later. I appreciate the questions that have been asked. Thank you very much for those of you who've asked several questions about this. But I want to talk about the concerns that are connected to the, to that ask, and then hopefully not run out of time. I was planning on five minutes to make some specific ask. But let me just start off by saying that I think this effort to draft a question about wards should be 100% council-led. Council has been elected to draft policy and legislation for us. The city manager, with all due respect to the city manager, a nice man, is the chief administrative officer of the city, and you know that. This is not an administrative issue. The people of Westminster are not a department of the city manager. And it's particularly disappointing, again, a little bit negative, I'm sorry. It's a little bit disappointing because a lot of the requests for this charter question have been brushed off as mapping issues. There's been a deliberate choice not to involve the public. In fact, at the last study session, again, with all due respect to the assistant city manager, also seems like a nice man, he said that public engagement would happen after the vote. That's too late. There's not even really awareness. I went and looked for this information under boards and commissions, city council, the events calendar. Maybe I'm a terrible searcher. I find nothing about this on the website. So what's happening now is that the house is being designed. It's being framed, and we're being told that we can pick the paint color. It's a simple question that you get to draft. And I think right now the charter says under 3.3, and I'm cutting this short, so I'm bouncing around. But it says that Westminster, as you know, shall be one ward. To add one phrase that says shall be X number of wards, three or four, that shall be equally divided in population as much as possible is not mapping. That's semantics. That's part of the issue. Should that be in the charter question, protecting the city of Westminster against ambitious politicians in the future? And then to say a 5% deviation that I can explain is just a guard on that. Same way, you can go up to 5% deviation. Those aren't mapping questions. And I'll end by just saying, I'm asking for more motions to make more awareness on the website, more public discussion, and that you consider two or three viable alternatives when you discuss this fully. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mirli Torrosa. Welcome.
Thank you. Gracias. I learned. I hope this is enough. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for the opportunity to express my opinion on the Westminster Hills off-leash open space. And why I believe it's important to keep the park as it is current state. I do not know if any of our council members have visited this amazing open space. If you have not, I encourage you to take the time to go and take a walk, bring your hat, favorite drink, non-alcoholic, of course. Our favorite time is early in the morning between six and eight AM. You will soon be able to see why this place is like no other. You will see all the colors of the healthy vibrant prairie, hear all the birds singing, especially the meadow larks. Stunning mountain views and our happy four-legged, four-legged friends with their happy tails. Our experience using this off-leash dog park has been nothing but amazing. We now come almost every day and walk for miles. I am not, not an environmental expert, but as far as my eyes can see, I have seen no, any, no deterioration nor destructions as they claim. This open space is beautiful, looks super healthy and the interaction with all the people running, walking, riding their bikes, pet owners and their dogs have always been positive. This open space provides dogs with the opportunity to walk at their own pace. They can interact with other dogs along the trails and have tons of fun at the other end where there is a nice creek. Or they can just walk for miles with their owners and have the most of the place for themselves. And that is the great thing about this park, its size. So many trails you can choose to take and this spreads and the people and the traffic. The physical and mental health benefits this place provides for both dogs and people are priceless. We have witnesses and experienced this with us and our dog, whom we adopted from the shelter a year ago. And we are so blessed to have her in our lives. This open space has helped her to burn that extra energy, learn how to socialize and interact both dogs and people. And oh boy, does she loves to be the freedom, to see the freedom to be off-leash. Thousands of visitors from all over really enjoy and love this off-leash space. And it's unfortunate that a few individuals have been very loud and vocal against this beautiful place using isolated incidents. Talking about dogs fighting or even attacking people with the only intention of making people believe these incidents happen on a regular basis. And trying to spread the word, making people think this place is unsafe for dogs and people. We use this park every day and I have to say that I have never seen any of these incidents happen while we walk. Not the piles of poop. This place has always been a heaven for my dog and for us to enjoy. And I'm pretty sure that the vast majority of the open space user will agree. In conclusion, my heart is with this place. We can make changes to improve the parking and we must enforce the law.
Thank you.
Please don't make the leash park smaller or disappear. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Keith Burton. Welcome.
Good evening, I'm Keith Burton. I wanted to express my support for the Westminster Hills open space dog park as well. I think it should be maintained in its current configuration. The size of the space is one of the things that makes it very unique. And my dog is one of the many dogs that needs more exercise and stimulation than they can typically get walking on a leash. Her behavior has improved dramatically. We used to have trouble keeping her from jumping on people and other dogs in an effort to play. And since we've taken her there and she's had the opportunity to socialize with other dogs and people. She's become much more relaxed around other folks and other dogs. I'm not an expert on the ecology, but I do have a background in engineering and data collection and analyzation. And the data that I have from almost daily walks suggests that the prairie is full of diverse plants and animals. We see many birds all the time, every time we walk. And I don't believe that most dogs stay on the trail most of the time. And I don't believe that random dogs running into the prairie has a significant impact on the prairie or the ecology. One of the other things that's been mentioned is all the waste. I heard the amount of waste, which shocked me at the beginning. But to me, the amount of waste that's removed from that space shouldn't be looked at as a negative thing. It should be viewed as a positive thing, that most people are very responsible about picking up after their dogs. And I think it's, it should be a good thing. Some of the other comments I've heard are about the dogs being attacked by other dogs. One of the rules of the park is that aggressive dogs are not allowed. And since I've been out there walking my dog, I've never seen any other dogs attack another dog or another person. You know, the park attracts a lot of people from around the area. There's no question about that. It's a very popular place. Most of the objections that I've heard are coming from people who live next to the space. And it seems like a relatively small group of people compared to the number of people who use the park and enjoy the park and have no issues with the park. The one concern that I've heard is the parking issue. That would annoy me too if I had people parking around my house. But I think that's an easy thing to fix with the right enforcement and sending a clear message.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bill Janowski. Welcome.
Thank you. Let's see here, gotta be able to read. Okay, so my name is Bill Janowski and I've been a Westminster resident and an open space user since June of two thousand and two. I am in support of keeping the off-leash access at Who's in its current state and was a member of the cat team. The cat team was not a fair and equitable experience for me. You have it in front of you, I'm gonna skip over that. Ecosystem impacts are not being objectively evaluated and current studies are highly biased and flawed. The E. coli study continues to be an issue mentioned by both the park staff members and other cat team members in the press. When in fact, during the cat team meeting, we were instructed to ignore this as an issue since it shows the ditch is contaminated with E. coli bacteria before it ever reaches the dog park. Dog waste is not the primary source of the E. coli and they know that. Weeds, invasive weeds were well established prior to the open space becoming an off-leash dog park. As a result of ground disturbance associated with cattle grazing and the overpopulated prairie dog colonies that were relocated by the parks to there. They are not caused by the spread, uh, by dogs being off-leash. In two thousand and fourteen, the off-leash dog area expanded to its current size and use. Since no data was collected at time, at that time by parks, there can be no comparisons to the before and after effects of the off-leash impacts, if there are any. As a professional biologist, I have witnessed far better ecological conditions now at the park than were present ten years ago. Another concern brought up at cat team meetings was for the nesting birds such as meadow larks. I've also seen no evidence to support this concern. In fact, in late April, following the cat team field visit, I took a walk myself in an evening and counted twenty-nine meadow larks, just in one loop. The ground nesting birds such as meadow larks and burrowing owls appear to be thriving. I find it very troubling that PRL can put in the Greenway bike trail right through the middle of the wildlife habitat. And now have added a permanent concrete bike path with no environmental studies. When I asked during the cat team meeting about what environmental safeguards were put in place or taken before the concrete, concrete bike path was poured. I was told the city doesn't have the complete environmental analyses. This is a valuable resource that is considered a gem for Westminster, as seen in the cat team meetings and the public sessions. People moved to Westminster because of this open space off-leash dog park. Certain cat team members presented numerous good ideas and plans for solutions to address concerns that we never even got to discuss or move forward due to the disorganized and poorly run cat team meetings. Four members of the cat team did agree to a map that kept the current size of the off-leash area, recommending numerous improvements and compromises. I do not believe this plan that had the most cat team support was even shared by the park staff at the last city council meeting.
Thank you, your time is up. The next speaker is Christine LaBerg. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Christine LaBerge and I live at one one seven one five West one hundred and seventh Avenue. My home is approximately five hundred feet from the dog park parking lot off of Sims Street. I would like to begin tonight by thanking the city council for your time and attention to this extremely important issue. My family and I moved into our home almost twenty years ago. We bought our house for one primary reason. It was next to the dog park we had grown to love. This was an area we wanted to raise our kids in, where we wanted to walk our dogs. And where we could be part of a community that valued the connection between nature, recreating with our dogs, and enjoying the beautiful vistas of the Flatirons and Front Range. Our children learned to ride their bikes at this dog park. And we'd run up the hill just past the ditch to chase the sunset after dinner and get a wonderful view. And when my daughter was six, she did her science fair project by bringing her sled over to the dog park and holding on to our dogs in the hopes that she would have a wonderful dog sled team. Much to her disappointment, our dogs just turned around and kissed her instead of pulling her. We have seen the dog park evolve greatly over the past twenty years. Vegetation has changed primarily due to precipitation. Last summer, the grasses were so tall, other summers are more dry. We've seen incredible wildlife, snakes, birds, coyotes, and many others. And several year, and several years ago, parking in our neighborhood became an issue as the parking lot at Sims became full. But as signs were put up and the parking lot off one hundred, one hundredth avenue was constructed, we no longer have that issue. The people in this dog park are caring, they are thoughtful. Some don't pick up after their dogs, but most do. The dog park is part of our community. It is part of how we connect. I see my neighbors at the dog park, I run into old friends, and I meet new people. Land use is difficult to manage, there's no denying this. But what we have here is something truly special, something that can't be found in other parts of Westminster or even in Colorado. It needs to be protected and it needs to be maintained for the unique purpose that it serves, off-leash connection with our pups. The vast majority of users at this dog park stay on the trails, their dogs stay on the trails. Wildlife presence ebbs and flows with precipitation as grasses provide additional cover. Last summer, we saw a record number of different types of snakes and birds, all enjoying the lush vegetation. Two years ago, we got to watch three horned owls grow up at a huge tree at the dog park. This year, I've already seen lots of blooming cacti, many birds, and the snakes beginning to peek out. All of this can and is happening while our dogs enjoy this special place off-leash with us. I implore you, please do not change this special place. Please keep the current four hundred and twenty acres off-leash. The vast majority of dog park users are committed to keeping this park clean, safe, and respectful for dogs, people, and wildlife. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Meredith Knopf. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you for talking, listening to me today. My name is Meredith Knopf and I'm an advocate for keeping the Westminster off-leash dog park, an off-leash dog park and the same anchorage it is now, but with improved land management and traffic parking practices. I hold a master's degree in environmental science and biogeochemistry. And I have a twenty-plus-year career in pragmatic multi-use land management and air regulatory practices. I have been a faithful visitor of the Westminster dog park for over ten years, with first with my first dog, a Vichla named Haduk. And my current dog, a Vichla mix named Indiana Jones. This park is a special place for me and my dogs. Haduk's ashes are there, as well as some, as some of my other friends' dogs who have also crossed the Rainbow Bridge. It is a wonderful gift for the city of Westminster and its canine citizens and their humans. I would hate to see this place go away due to inadequate management practices of the past. This happens a lot. Places and practices grow too large or too popular for their original policies. And therefore, policies and procedures need to be updated. Luckily, there are wonderful off-leash dog park examples that Westminster can learn from, Cherry Creek State Park, City of Boulder, and others. I hope this council makes the right choice to protect and keep this amazing resource. It is beloved by so many dogs and their humans. Thank you, and Indiana Jones also thanks you for listening to me.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Gesinski. Welcome.
Thank you. So, yes, my name is David Gesinski. I've been a Westminster resident since two thousand, so twenty-four years. Um, I'm on my third dog in the dog, open space. I'm, it's really an open space, right? But, um, beautiful space, I feel lucky that we have it. I am first and foremost an engineer and I'm a project manager, so I, even though I'm an advocate for the open space, I'm more of an advocate for solutions. And I think we've heard some good solutions. I, uh, years ago, have anybody ever heard of the Volunteers of Colorado? They do trail building and trail, um, so an expert like what I would consider Meredith, who spoke in erosion and ecology of the land, goes out and looks at trails and determines where there's parts that have, might have a problem. And then, um, the Volunteers of Colorado go out and they don't close the trails, they don't cancel it, they move them. And they let, they let the damaged area regrow back. Now there's, this is a part of the solution that could happen here. If, I've heard people say, and I've, I've read things that said, wow, some of these trails now are seventy-five feet wide, like that main area that goes in from Westminster to the single bridge. You can move the bridge. I know it's got footings, or you could move the bridge all the way to the, um, south side and close that area off. And then now, now you could let that area grow back. So that's just one idea and I know there's a bunch of other ideas out there, so. The other thing, you know, I've heard, you know, if they wanna decrease the size of it, how is that gonna improve it? That's gonna, the part that's closest to the road and closest to the houses, that's gonna make it twice as much traffic in there and twice as much noise next to the houses. It's not gonna make it better, I think it's gonna make it worse. And it's gonna, you know, if there's any problems now, um, I just think it's gonna make it worse. The other thing, um, I thought, um, I know there's a billboard when you first go in. You know, there's a lot of human beings with a lot of dogs, everybody loves their dogs, I love my dog. Not everybody understands the same rules. Personally, to me, I would put up a metal sign with a set of ten rules about, cause not everybody realizes they have to have control of their dog at all times, even though I don't, I think it's very rare. But, um, you know, it's just, it would just be a reminder of people. So my, my, uh, to wrap it up, I would use more of the environmental expertise that is available. And make changes, close off the parts that are worn or eroded. And, um, plant some trees. I don't understand why, um, why sometimes Westminster seems to cut down a lot of trees but not plant any trees on. Thank you.
The next speaker is Amanda Hale. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing me tonight. My name is Amanda Hale. I'm a Westminster homeowner and I have lived in Westminster for twenty-five years. And in a nutshell, I consider the Westminster Hills off-leash dog park the very best thing about living in here in our beautiful city. My two dogs and I go to the dog park every week as many days as we can. It is our happy place and it is our safe place. It's beautiful and relaxing and we feel free when we are there. The people are kind and we have made many human and canine friends alike there. My three children love going to meet other adorable sweet dogs and watching our dogs splash and zoom around. We have one dog that literally jumps for joy when he is there. My parents, who live in Florida, deeply love our dog park and go each time they come visit. But I'm the one that goes the most. I cannot overstate the importance of this park. I cannot overstate the importance of this park to me. This park has seen me through some of my darkest days. In 2017, my life was shattered by the ending of my 23-year marriage under horrific circumstances. My children and I were shell-shocked and heartbroken. I felt completely lost, broken, and absolutely terrified. Besides a whole lot of therapy for our family, I learned to cope with my struggles by running. I had so many big uncomfortable feelings inside me that I needed to deal with them somehow, so I ran and ran and ran. Then I sought to help my children cope with their losses by adopting one and then another rescue dog. Those two balls of fur have given us so much loyalty and love, both of which we desperately needed. But, oh my, they were rambunctious and in need of a lot of exercise, so you can guess where we ended up. It can be very difficult to run far as one middle-aged human hanging on to the leashes of two 55-pound teenage male dogs, and my knees got bloodied too many times. And so began our deep need and deep love for the Westminster Open Space Dog Park as both our human and canine family members could run free and recover. Then in 2022, I contracted COVID-19, my life was upended once again. What followed was two years of recovery from brain and lung injury due to long COVID. I was mostly bedridden from fatigue, pain, and dizziness for many months. At times, the pain and inflammation I experienced were so great that I could barely move. Once I was well enough to go, our amazing dog park was once again my place of healing, joy, and relief. I walked slow, short, and sissies while my two faithful companions chased each other through the river and up and down the trail. In this way, they could still run even though I could not. Their joy was contagious, and going to the dog park every morning was an invaluable help to me during yet another tough turn in life.
Thank you, your time is up, thanks. The next speaker is Robert Foles.
Hi, yes, I'm going to use my time, we have plenty of people speaking on behalf of why we need to keep the dog park.
The next speaker is David Brown. Welcome.
Thank you so much, appreciate the opportunity.
You can raise it, there's, yeah.
I got it this time. Good evening. The reason I'm here is to provide an update for the council and mayor, thank you for listening. I am a property owner times three on 9044 Harlan, across the street, literally 30 yards from the Sustainability Center as it's known. I have been in frequent contact with the city manager's office, thank you Mr. Freytek, and some of his other staff. What we've come to is a bit of an impasse, and that's why I'm here tonight, and I'm hoping to engage the council and mayor with the problem. And we were assured in writing by the city manager's office and staff that the dumpsters and totes and basically offloading facilities and equipment would not be visible and would be behind the masonry structure that comprises the building that houses the Sustainable Sustainability Center. Unfortunately, that has not come to pass, and the vendor that operates under city guise is having their staff do basically waste transfer on the frontage road directly in front of our, and there's a term you've all heard, NIMBY, not in my backyard, this is in my front yard, and that of all of our neighbors. And I don't speak for the HOA, I'm not on the board, but I am an owner of three of these units, checking time here. But basically, what has come to pass, and Mark apologized, because you are a good man, but it's one of those things, at the end of the day, we do have an impasse, and we do have a protest, and I'm here to voice that, you know, speak to power, I know what that means. And what this is, is a trampling of our right to quiet enjoyment of our homes. And what we were assured of in writing, and I've got many emails, I'm very popular with the city manager's office, I'm sure, but what it comes down to is this comedy is free, but what it comes down to is that we have an interest in our property, and that's enshrined in some of the very important documents, the United States Constitution, is that we have the ability to enjoy the right to that property, and it's being infringed and allowed. This is not just some nightclub or some, you know, erroneous parking lot, this is the city of Westminster's facility that the city has engaged, a private vendor, to operate. And I'm here to let the council know what's happening. And every night, they clean it up, so when you drive by, there's nothing to see here. Looks like there's nothing going on in 21 seconds. What's going on is there's loud, visible blue totes and about 12 stations of unloading trash all day, six days a week, in front of my picture window and all of our neighbors. So I would like the city to please look into this problem for us, thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sam Bandemir. Welcome.
Good evening, perhaps we can make mine rather quick, I didn't realize that item 10 had been postponed, and that's what I was going to speak on, would you rather I come back?
Or you can give your testimony now.
Okay, well, my name is Sam Bandemir, I am the Republican candidate for District 19, and that's basically everything from Sheridan West. And I just want to express my opposition to SB 24-131, which deals with the CCW, the concealed carry issue. I'd like to support our law-abiding citizens as opposed to the criminals, and we know that the criminals are going to be criminals, no matter how many laws we put up there. So, if I'm elected in November, I will be opposing that bill, and if anything, trying to repeal it, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Eleanor O'Connor. Welcome.
Oh, thank you, this is nerve-wracking. I wanted to thank everyone in front of me and behind me, even if we don't agree, because I know being active in politics isn't easy, but it's our civic duty. Local politics has more impact on our lives than national politics. Anyways, my name's Eleanor O'Connor, and we moved here in April. The first thing we did when we moved here before, we found our new pizza place, taco place, our favorite worship center, gym, local farmer's market, our favorite hike, we found our favorite dog park. We found one of the greatest communities. We love talking to other people there about how we both bathe our dogs afterwards. Our first memories are our dogs realizing how open the space is, how we balance loving our dog and needing to pay bills without feeling bad, not giving our dogs the right care, and we always end up joking, this is so nice because we won't see our dogs for the rest of the day. They are so tired, and we are smiling ear to ear seeing dogs get to be dogs. We can work in peace, cook in peace, care for our families and communities, and, I'm sorry, I'm shaking, and support local businesses without worrying about our dogs. Or in case, we can bring our dog, who loves people, and know she would be so tired, we wouldn't have to cut our trip short because she's too excited. Not only does this help with household work and related stress, but mental and physical well-being. My dog likes to sniff, and that does nothing for my workout regimen, as you can tell. This park is two birds with one stone for us. We can keep a pace, and our dog can stop and sprint as much as she wants. Also, my boyfriend can enjoy seeing my dog Olive when he doesn't want to have a workout after a long day of crating and keeping the lights on at UC Boulder. If you want to have social hour, this is great, it's the only place we have made friends so far. It's hard making friends at this point in our age, and this has been important for us in our mental health after leaving our families in Chicago and California to come here. We don't have people to watch our dog, and we don't have friends. Enter Westminster Dog Park. On the other hand, if you don't want to talk to people, or your dog is antisocial, you can take your leash dog and get away from the main places, and peacefully walk your dog and let the leash go. I have never seen anyone out there with a strong recall, without a string of recall when necessary. No matter the time we go there, there are always people. This is a part of people's routines, and we know that routines are essential to happy living, especially with a dog. You want to talk to someone that's there to socialize, you want to go off on your own and recharge with a podcast that's available. This is especially important for Colorado residents who care for the environment and who don't want to add emissions to take their dogs to further parks. The parking lot we go to is usually not only full, like, what are these people talking to? But also, if it was full, where are these people going to go? In my experience, in Charleston, Chicago, Seattle, people go where dogs aren't allowed. They let their dogs off-leash when it's not allowed, and that is not always to the benefit of the community, both environmentally and socially.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
You did fine, take a deep breath, don't pass out. The next speaker is Matthew Arts. Welcome.
Good evening, council, thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the park as it currently stands. My name's Matthew Arts, I'm a local homeowner, business owner, and user of the park for the past 10 years. As a person of Native American heritage and beliefs, the Westminster Off-Leash Dog Park is a place for prayer and meditation, as well as exercising with my pets. Where others seek God in four walls, I seek Him in four elements. I have found conscious contact with the God of my understanding there. As a runner and cyclist as well, I run three to four miles twice a week with my pets. It's a bonding experience and a safe space to train. I don't consider myself a health nut, but I attribute my health to being a dog owner and living near the Westminster Off-Leash Dog Park. Regarding mental health, nothing else compares to the quality time that can be spent there with your family and pets, I've found nowhere else like it. I've met and made lifelong friends and gotten involved in volunteer work and community service. I've been on doggy dates as well as dates, and having a place for dogs to meet on neutral ground is considered good etiquette. We joke that it's doggy Disneyland, it's a utopia. It is soothing to the soul when you can be around animals that don't see color, political affiliation, bank account, et cetera. Dogs care about spirit, they care about energy, it's medicine for their soul and for the users of the park. If we've noticed an increase of the park, it's because the need for mental health has increased. People have found the value of spending time with their animals and getting outside. As far as my dog's health, dog-to-dog socialization is an important thing, it's just as important as people-to-dog socialization, which is just half of it. Additionally, some dogs are strong breeds, they're considered working breeds, they need a place to exercise. The smaller dog parks around towns just don't cut it. A working breed without a place to exert themselves is like a human with a college degree but no job. They feel a lack of purpose and happiness. If we are afraid of overuse of the park, then there should be more parks in areas like the Westminster Off-Leash Dog Park. Thank you for the privilege to speak on behalf of the park as it currently stands for my family and the future.
Thank you. The next speaker is Amy Hawkins. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Amy Hawkins, I've lived in the community, the countryside community, for over 20 years. It is a beautiful place, and we bought it because of the views, because of Westminster, the schools, and the dog park. It is a wonderful place to live, and I wouldn't live anywhere else. We adopted our second dog about three years ago, rescued him, or he rescued us, who's to say? His name is Murphy, and I made a commitment to Murphy that we would walk every day at the dog park. I didn't realize the commitment that, I knew the commitment I was doing to the dog, I didn't realize the impact it would have on me. The dog park is not only a beautiful place to walk, you walk, I walk west toward the mountains, loop around, walk east, see beautiful sunsets, beautiful skies, clouds, I can't even describe it if you have it out there at 6:00 a.m. It's the best time of the morning to go. Oh, what I didn't realize is the commitment or the impact it would have on me as a person. The friends I have made, the people I have met, our worlds would never cross if I wasn't for, at the dog park. Different people, environments, backgrounds, beautiful people, that we call it our morning pack, because it's a group of people that support each other, love each other, need each other. I think in this world, many people have talked about mental health, and the support and the community, isn't that what we all want? We want that for ourselves, we want it for our dogs, we need it, who doesn't need it? I think one of the city council goals, priorities, is advancing a thriving community, and I don't know how else you can do that, but keeping the dog park as is, the beautiful, amazing environment that it is. Someone else said that the growth and the flowers and all of that are so dependent on, just like our yards are, dependent on how much moisture we get. Last year, when we had rained till the middle of July, there were wildflowers I've never seen before, because there was so much moisture out there. When we have dry seasons, of course, we have less flowers, less vegetation, but it's an amazing place, not just dependent on the environment and the rain, but all of the people take such wonderful care of that park. And could we do more? Absolutely. But I think that it is such an asset to Westminster and everyone who's blessed to go there, so please keep it open, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Laura Poide. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm much shorter than Amy. My name's Laura Poide, I live in Westminster. I'm a guardian, but I came to speak to you as just a resident. I wanted to share a personal experience that I felt and experienced with the dog park. I moved to Colorado in 2016 when my son began attending CU. And I left everyone that I knew in New York in my 50s, packed up a car with only possessions in that car for the immediate move, and I rented an apartment in Denver until my house was sold. I also worked virtual, so it was a pretty lonely life. Anyone that has an 18-year-old son in college can attest that you don't see your child anymore. My daughter was also in college, I didn't see her. When I bought my house in Westminster in 2017, I joined the gym and was hoping to meet more people. And I did meet people, but they never became friends that I hung out with. Three years ago, my son came home with Yami, and guess what? I was the one that took care of her. I took her out, I cared for her, I bought her food, and I found the dog park, and I'd go two times every day. We met people, and I'd have playdates at the dog park, and I learned dogs' names, and I learned all about dog behavior, because I hadn't had a dog since I was a kid. And Yami and I started going to the dog park at 6:00 a.m., before I began work at 7:00 a.m. And we met a group of people, and we started walking together, and as Amy said, we formed a pack. Friends at last, it was so exciting. Last year, when my sister was diagnosed with stage IVB cancer, and I thought I was going to lose my job of 30 years at the age of 60, I lost myself. I lost my confidence, I lost my joy, I lost my will. I can honestly say that walking in that dog park, listening to the birds, meeting people and talking to them, meeting those friends at 6:00 a.m., restored me, and I felt less You guys, we've been listening to you since January, and I'm really impressed with how dedicated you are to the community. And I think your jobs are probably pretty stressful, so I'd invite you to come to the dog park and go for a long walk, don't just stay at the front entrance. Watching the dogs play is like watching children play, and you understand joy. Talking to people without dealing with politics is refreshing, and I especially recommend coming at 6:00 a.m. and joining our pack.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kathy Kelly. Welcome.
I am Kathy Kelly, I'm from Westminster, I've been a resident of Westminster for 26 years now, and I want to thank everyone on the council for giving me an opportunity to talk. I am- I am here to talk about the consideration that I know has been pushed until July about the concealed carry. As one of the state leaders for Moms Demand Action here in Colorado, I have an opportunity to work with many, many city councils, as well as the state legislature, on the subject of a variety of gun safety measures. And I can tell you personally, as well as for other Moms Demand Action members, just like myself, wearing a t-shirt, coming and testifying, that we have had, we have seen challenging situations, both in city council meetings and in the state legislature, with people who are concealed carry people. And while many of them are highly trained, it won't be until July 1st, 2025, that the new training requirements will start to take effect. And so some concealed carry members are trained, many concealed carry members have not yet even had to demonstrate capability with a gun, other than to load the gun itself. So it is a misconception that if you are concealed carry, you are more trained, not always. And when you look at the contentiousness that can happen in city council meetings and in a variety of other settings in the municipal facilities, it puts your elected officials, as well as your employees that work for the city of Westminster, and those of us who are constituents coming to speak, all of us are in a more compromised situation. And I also, I have been to the city council for probably, I think, 25 years of the 26 that I belonged, and you always have tremendous police officers who are standing by ensuring safety, and you actually will jeopardize their safety as well. And so on behalf of constituents, your staff, and those of you who are elected officials doing your duty, I would like to ask that you do not consider allowing concealed carry in the municipal buildings. Thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker is Susan Demuels. Welcome.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Susan Demel. I've lived in Colorado for over 40 years, 30 of them in Arvada and the last 10 here in Westminster. I've had a couple of dogs that were not suitable for using the dog park, but two and a half years ago, I walked into the Dumb Friends League wanting to get a senior dog, because I know that they're harder to adopt, and somehow I walked out with a one-year-old lab mix. He is very energetic, and he really needs to run, and this is the only place that he can do so. When I walk him in my neighborhood, he's on a leash. If he sees a rabbit and takes off, it's all I can do to hold him, and I have been pulled over a couple of times. Fortunately, I have already had two hip replacements, so I'm not in danger of breaking another hip, but, you know, it, it is a risk that I take. And so going to the dog park a couple of times a week has become routine for us. He loves it, he runs and plays with the other dogs, he's a very social, energetic dog, very sweet, it doesn't, it helps that he's very cute, too. Somebody told me this week at the dog park that he's a photo magazine cover. So the, the experience that I've had at, at the dog park has been all favorable. I always am respectful of others, I do not park in the neighborhood, I go at times when it's not busy so that I can park in the parking lot. I obey the rules, I always have other bags with me, both when I walk in my neighborhood and at the dog park, so I pick up other poop when I see it, not just my own. And the, the park to me is just a gorgeous place. Last summer, it was particularly beautiful because of all the rain we had, the wildflowers were stunning. In the 40 years that I've lived in Colorado, that is the only place that I have heard and seen metal larks. The dogs don't seem to be disturbing the birds at all, they are doing very well there. I've taken my grandson across the street to the Stanley Lake Park, and we've gone on some nature walks there and done some bird watching and things. But the park that is existing seems to be thriving, and I think it can continue that way with people and proper management. The, the Westie Dog Park Guardians have formed to help support the park, and I think they've offered many solutions to some of the problems that we're facing. And one of the things that I question is, of all the times that I've been to the dog park, I've only seen one ranger there once. And if you're going to pass more regulations and restrict the amount of area that people can have for off-leash visits, how is that going to be enforced? Are you hiring extra staff to go out there and ticket people that are not complying? Because passing more regulations without enforcement is just ridiculous, there's, there's no point to that. So I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. The next speaker is Wayne Wesler, Weisler.
Wayne Wesler. Hi. Welcome. Thank you, I appreciate it. So I wanted to show the council, my dogs bought this for me for Father's Day. Everybody out there who think they're the best, right here. So everybody tonight has made great points. I'm just going to go down my, my bulletized list. Fiduciary duties. The city council has fiduciary duties to bring in revenue to Westminster, the dog park. People come in from other cities. My friends specifically in, in Denver walk around, and then we go out for brunch, we get a bite to eat, generating revenue in Westminster. I heard some arguments tonight about changes to the wildlife, I haven't really seen it, I've been going to the dog park for about 18 years. I, I met my wife at, our second date was at the dog park, and I had a dog, she had a dog, they became best friends, we got married. Now we have two new dogs. And the sun comes up, they're waking me up, "Let's go to the dog park." My wife does the morning shift, I do the evening shift. I've seen the idea of an area where dogs would be leashed. Dogs are naturally more aggressive on leashes, it's just, it's just known, it's a fact. You can look it up, you can talk to veterinarians, you can talk to dog sitters, you can talk to dog trainers. The dog park allows the dogs to get exercise and allows people to get exercise. People said, "Oh, the dog park has changed." The main difference I've seen with vegetation is the paths widening due to COVID, right? So in 2020, we had to spread out, obviously, the paths got a little wider. Bikes, we're, we're not saying, "Hey, don't allow people bikes." People bike with their dogs. I've seen on two hands, people biking without dogs. With that stated, tires cause more issues to the erosion of the, of the land than, than dogs do. And I have a couple more things, I'll get in real quickly. Mental health, we talked about, for both the dogs and, and the humans. And then Obi is running for state senate, good luck, but he left a message on our machine at home saying, "Not meet me at Hoos, but meet me at the Westminster Dog Park." So that's how I did. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kelsey Smith. Welcome.
Thank you.
Just take a deep breath and relax, you're fine.
Okay, thank you, I guess it's already pretty clear, I'm nervous. Yeah, my name is Kelsey Smith, and I'm a resident of Adams County. I'm speaking to city council today to request you all to vote to keep the dog park or off-leash park as is. After leaving a bad relationship, I found such peace visiting this space with my one dog. And over six years later, my family has grown, and now my husband and our three dogs enjoy this beloved space every free moment we have. This place is where we go to exercise with our dogs and enjoy the breathtaking views of Colorado. We see our friends here every weekend, we bring our out-of-state family here to gloat about our local off-leash park. This place is a huge benefit for my health, physically and emotionally. My dogs and I crave this socialization together, and it would be absolutely devastating for us to lose this space, because there's nothing else comparable for us. Green space is important for the future, but also for the present, while so many of us are struggling with the cost of living and limited to no yard space. We need access to nature now more than ever, as Denver suburbs continue to expand and develop. Before we know it, Westminster may be one of those suburbs that's just housing developments and commercial space. We all clearly care for this space dearly and want to enjoy it for many years to come, so why can't we find compromise on this issue? I know the Westie Dog Park Guardians and their community is willing to do just about anything to save this space, whether it's volunteer cleanups or fundraising. Let us be the example for the rest of the country and what it looks like for a community to problem-solve and work together. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you for speaking or letting us all speak before you make a decision.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alexandra Coffold. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. As many have already stated today, my name is, well, I'm here to ask you to keep the Westminster Hills Open Area Dog Park and Off-Leash Park. I just said my name is Alexandra, my husband and I have lived in Westminster for about five years, and we have come to absolutely love the Westminster Dog Park. When we adopted our mixed German Shepherd puppy in 2019, his name is Steve, we went there almost every day to walk him, we went for runs, and we rode bikes with him at the park. It was just great to get him out to socialize, and make friends and see our neighbors as well. This became even more important and invaluable during COVID, only a few months after we had adopted him. In a time when connecting with people was scary and unknown, we had this dog park to turn to, where we were able to keep a set distance from everybody, but still connect with other people and teach our puppy how to socialize with other dogs and people alike. There is nowhere else that we could really do that in that time, and we have still continued going there almost weekly, as many of you have seen here. More recently, I was really, really thrilled to see the paved path being put down. There was some construction which posed some challenges, but we got through it and we came out on top. This path doesn't just allow for more walking and bike riding, but for strollers and wheelchairs. My, about two years ago, my mom was diagnosed with progressive supernuclear palsy, or PSP. It's basically an advanced form of Parkinson's, hindering her mobility and neurological abilities, meaning she's forced into a wheelchair about 95% of the time. My aunt and I share hosting my mom, my aunt's in Castle Rock and I'm in Westminster. While taking care of my mom, it's basically impossible for us to go for a walk with her in a wheelchair and with a leashed dog. If she holds the leashed dog, she can get pulled out of the chair, and if I hold the leash, she gets clotheslined. And yes, it's happened before, so now we don't do it, don't worry, she's okay. Taking my mom and Steve the dog to the Westminster Dog Park allows her to get fresh air and vitamin D, all while we can watch dogs play and I can get exercise while I push her on the trail. I'm not opposed to some change, as many have mentioned here, but I beg you not to make this park leashed. I will no longer be able to enjoy a walk with my mom and dog at the same time, because nobody else, no other parks really allow for that with the paved sidewalk there. We, this park has made my life and our lives overall much easier and brings us so much joy. I hope you can take my story into consideration while making your decision. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lily Cox. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Lily Cox, and I live at 10282 Robb Street in Westminster. Where I live is approximately three minutes walking distance to the dog park. First, I should, first I should say good evening, Mayor McNally, city council, and city clerk. I've lived across the street from the Westminster Hills Open Space for 42 years. It was in poor condition long before the dog park. Gale force winds, scorching heat, freezing temperatures, cattle grazing, and prairie dog overpopulation are the true culprits for the open space degradation. At the January 4, 2010 study session, a representative of parks presented a two-page staff report requesting funds to reseed the Westminster Hills Open Space at a cost of $20,000 per year, for a total of $80,000 over a four-year period. Their justification was that the overuse of the field by prairie dogs, which were relocated there by the city, the prairie dogs devoured the vegetation, allowing for the proliferation of noxious weeds. Their burrowing disturbed land to the point that the fields became dust bowls. I'm going to skip some of the other things I was going to say, because I really think this is important. It is not only the residents of the city of Westminster who appreciate the dog park. UC Health describes it as a stunning 420 acres of open space that awaits both dogs and humans. Denver Post says Westminster Hills is so big, you might forget that you're in a dog park. RE/MAX calls it 420 acres of doggy paradise. 5280 Magazine lists it as one of the best parks in the Denver metro area. Arrowhead Animal Hospital lists it as one of the top five dog parks, calling it a haven for both dogs and owners. If Westminster Hills Open Space is the jewel of the city of Westminster, I'm sorry, if Westminster Hills Open Space is the jewel of the city of Westminster's open space, then the Off-Leash Dog Park is the diamond. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Linda Bova. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm just going to say a few words. I was at the dog park today at 100th, and I just wanted to call it to the city manager's attention that there were fireworks all over the parking lot this morning, and it could have been at Sims, too, I didn't go down there. But I just want, would ask that the city has better surveillance between now and 4th of July, so we don't have any fires in the open space that could spread to the neighborhood, ruin the dog park, and also spread to Stanley Lake. So I hope that you hear me. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dan Cos. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Dan, and I've been a resident of Countryside for more than eight years. Open space status is the highest designation a piece of land can have in the city of Westminster. It requires the highest level of protection, complete with preservation and restoration requirements. Moving Westminster Hills out of open space removes some of that protection. Council has suggested at the last several meetings that rezoning the land for recreation could be reversed down the road. But if you can't limit off-leash use now, when dogs have no formal entitlement to the land, what makes you think you have the strength to do it in the future after you've redesignated the property? Some of you were elected to council because your platform stated you protected parks and open space. Removing 12% of our available open space is not protecting it. Some of you were elected as an advocate for marginalized and excluded residents. 70% of Westminster residents don't own a dog, and many residents, including dog owners, would like to use the open space but feel unable to do so in the presence of off-leash dogs, some of which you heard tonight. According to Westward reporting, the Guardians have 300 members. Rezoning this land would allow a relatively small group of people to dictate land use for the entire city, disregarding the public at large. You have yet to do a statistically significant survey and still have dismissed the feedback from the cat and from city employees. Residents in the countryside neighborhood have brought their concerns to the city for a decade, and council has ignored it. a decade and council has ignored it, so much so that many residents stay silent on this even today because they believe you don't care that they're excluded from access. Some of you have served this city for many, many years. Is this the legacy you want to leave? The first acres of open space Westminster ever acquired as a city, you rezone because you lack the courage to say no to a loud minority. You're absolutely mistaken if you think off-leash dog owners outnumber Colorado citizens who love and use our open space. Finally, the council agenda I provided documents to you show the intended purpose for acquiring the land in question. It was intended for protection and preservation, as highlighted on the documents. Dogs can only be off-leash if they don't impede those outcomes. It's overwhelmingly clear that they do. I'm asking you to follow through accordingly. Do not rezone this land and instead please protect our open space for all users. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Micah McLaughlin. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you all for welcoming us here tonight and thank you all for being here. Gosh, first of all, I do not envy you all. I am an economics and political science major and I know that you are managing so many interests and it's really hard to reconcile them all. I am here tonight to talk about the Dog Park issue and our families stand for the Dog Park staying the same, but I do really empathize with how many interests there are and that it's complex. A couple of the interest groups that I see being really salient, not certainly the only important ones, but the groups that really represent where most citizens are going to fall somewhere, is those who love to walk in the open space, those who love to bike in the open space, of all different ages, those who like to, sorry, let me find my spot here, those who have dogs and want open space for off-leash. And then the ecosystem itself. For me, those are the four big buckets I see. And I want to talk about each one of those, but first I just want to say my heart is here for my mother, who is an elderly woman. She has a severe handicap that makes hearing almost very, very difficult. So her dogs are everything because there isn't a language barrier and she goes to this Dog Park every single day. Since this issue has come up, our house has been full of anxiety and fear and grief about the potential loss of the true center of her life and her lifestyle, her place of belonging and connection. And I do understand, she's just one woman, she's just one part of the landscape. But when I look at the landscape of interests, I see that the bike riders have 60 trails in this county. I see that those who love to walk in nature have 3,200 acres that they can walk in or take their dogs on leash if that's their preference. This is the one place that those who want off-leash have. And then finally, the ecosystem interests are really important. And I just, for time's sake, I just want to say I really value the diverse ecosystem. Thank you for standing for that. And I'm asking for dogs to also be represented as a diverse species in our ecosystem who have needs that are valid. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lori Goldstein.
Welcome. Good to see you all. Thank you for giving me time tonight. As an elected official myself on the Board of Education, I know what it's like to sit on that side of the dais and listen to public comment and tonight I'm very grateful I'm not you. And I'm not here to talk about that Dog Park, but what I am here to talk about is the Squires Park Plan. I'm a resident of North Park, I've lived there for 26 years and my children went to Rocky Mountain Elementary and they spent a lot of time growing up in that park and I think it's great that the city has decided to revamp the park. However, I do have concerns about the small dog park that is proposed for that area. And tonight while I was hanging out meeting some of my fellow residents, even the ones that are supporting the big Dog Park, said that this little Dog Park kind of doesn't really make sense. It's in the middle of a neighborhood, it's next to a school, it's not that big of a space. So I just would like for you guys to consider getting rid of that small little Dog Park plan in Squires Park. And I was talking to the superintendent today about this very topic and he kind of agreed with me, he said I could say that. But once again, I don't envy you your decision on the big Dog Park, but I do hope you'll reconsider what is going on in Squires Park. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kyla Dunkle. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Kyla Dunkle and I am here in support of the Dog Park as is. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have lived in Westminster since 2003 and before that in Broomfield. I have been at most of these meetings with the city council, including the public meeting at the Rex Center. I have heard all sides of this issue between the city of Westminster and the citizens who want to keep the 420 acre park off-leash for dogs. I read the 50-page report from the citizens of Westminster who call themselves the Guardians of the Dog Park. They have put an enormous amount of time and effort to give the citizens a voice in this very volatile issue. I have been coming to the Westminster Hills Open Space Dog Park since 2003. It is my sanctuary for myself and my dogs. It is my favorite thing to do, meeting all the people and seeing the joy that dogs have there. It is truly a magical place and for me and my dogs and all the people who go there. As of today, we have 10,000 signatures to keep the space as is, off-leash Dog Park. I can walk and get exercise I enjoy and the dogs do too. The dogs need to run and play without the constraint of a leash. The reason there is little conflict is because of the amount of space and because the dogs are not on leash. I am utterly amazed this is a huge issue for the city of Westminster. They expanded the area some years ago with another parking lot on 100th and now suddenly they want to cut it down to a fraction of its size and shut off access to the water? Why? Is it simply because the city management are bicycle riders and they are only interested in their own personal agenda? I don't know. They have way bigger problems and issues to focus on. The airport, the traffic, crime, rocky flats, et cetera, not to mention all the open space they still have to manage. They say they don't have the budget to manage this area? Why are they not focusing on the other areas of open space they do have? Obviously, this space is treasured by 1 million visitors because people love it and need it. Anyone who comes here comes back, often driving 40 miles to come. We need more areas like this, not less. Since 1992, when I moved to Westminster, this area has grown immensely, more and more houses and apartments. Denver is going to be the next LA. We need more acres for people to socialize outdoors with other people and their dogs. Let Westminster be the model for other cities to do the same. One other consideration that I have not heard anybody mention is if you called the Dog Park, where do you think all these people and their dogs are going to go? They're going to be walking in the neighborhoods and on the bicycle trails and that is going to be an enormous problem for the bicycle riders and everyone else. What do you think they're going to be pooping and peeing? They're going to be peeing and pooping in people's yards. You think the people will like that? No, they won't.
You're trying to.
And there will be no way to stop it from happening. The dogs are not going to disappear. They are not going to get rid of their dogs.
Thank you. Your time is, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Marley Steele Inama, sorry. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, Mayor McNally and council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Marley Steele Inama and I am a resident of Westminster for the past 23 years. I live in the Walnut Grove neighborhood that's adjacent to Countryside and I am here to speak on behalf of the decision that you all are going to be making soon about the Westminster Open Space, Westminster Hills Open Space. I also serve as a member of the Parks Recreation Library and Open Space Advisory Board. I am not speaking on behalf of the board tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of myself. In 1985, our voters approved a sales tax to acquire and preserve open space, making us the second city in Colorado to make such wonderful action. Since then, we've preserved 3,800 acres, achieving its goal of preserving the 15% that we sought to seek. I'm proud of our city's commitment to preservation, conservation and resource sustainability. As a longtime resident of Westminster, I have recreated Westminster Hills Open Space since I moved here in 2001. I've enjoyed this beautiful area with my dogs when they were alive, as a runner as well as a mountain biker. It's a special place to many in the community, if it's not obvious as of tonight, and the many other public comments that we've heard. And I'm here to express that I understand the passion of everyone here, it is a very passionate place for myself as well, and I also understand the fear that our community has in learning this space. What I know as a member of Parks Record Library Open Space Advisory Board is that the city is not trying to get rid of the open space. What I fear is that we are going to get rid of what is designated as open space. And so why I am here today is to seek a way that we can sustain our open space in this area as a vast amount of space that we currently have while also having an official Dog Park. I am concerned that if we reclassify 470 acres of open space, as mentioned before, we will lose 12% of what we designate as open space and I know that our community values that. I would like our council and our city to seek a responsible and sustainable way that we can keep both things. There are people who do want to recreate an open space without dogs that are on leash and I am totally comfortable recreating there with dogs on leash, but I do know that there are people and they've expressed that that is a concern for them. So if we can look at solutions where there is access to that, to the open space that is not the dog space, I think that would be a wonderful solution. And I also do encourage us to continue to find that happy medium where we can sustain both the open space and an official Dog Park. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carol Gosseheimer. Welcome.
Hello. Westminster City Council's stated vision centers around building a fairer city that supports and celebrates its communities. Doing this requires that council understands the desires of their communities. In regards to the Westminster Hills Open Space, you have fallen short. You have so many tools available for assessment and feedback, yet you have continued to ignore them. The CAP process was not fully understood by council, but rather just dismissed. The ProSLAB meeting that has not been attended by city council liaison in months and this week, the city manager's office confirmed to me personally that there was no statistically valid survey data related to Who's or the Dog Park. You've welcomed information from an agenda-driven advocacy group without question, but neglected all broader feedback sources and research at your disposal. Council should be taking every possible measure to make decisions based on valid expert input and broad citizen feedback. You've ignored countless experts and failed to properly engage the community at large. I once again ask that council request a statistically valid, unbiased survey of Westminster residents before making this decision. Without a survey, you choose to be uninformed about what your residents, your voter base actually wants in favor of one very loud segment of the city. When Jeff Go was surveyed about their open space, 78% of respondents said open space is important to them because of wildlife and wildlife habitat. And 86% or better wanted increased trail development with sensitivity to plants and wildlife, stay-on-trail requirements and sensitive areas closed. An off-leash Dog Park stands contrary to all these things. A decision to rezone this entire space runs directly against your goals for a fairer city and favors only off-leash dog enthusiasts. Dog owners promise to pick up dog poop, but dog poop is a very small part of the problem. Dog urine is extremely detrimental to the ecosystem and it's not being discussed. It overconcentrates the nutrients in the soil, which support invasive plant growth and hinders native plants. Driving out native plants reduces the native wildlife that depends on them. This cycle can only be broken by eliminating all forms of dog waste. Will dog owners be given peacups at the entrance to collect urine? Much of Westminster's character is tied to our open space. The objective of the open space program is to promote quality for all life, for quality of life for all citizens of Westminster through preservation and protection of the natural environment. Please uphold the integrity of this program by doing the right thing, limit off-leash dog use at Westminster Hills. There are rumors circulating that the city secretly intends to develop this land based on its historic PUD zoning designation. I would like to ask that city manager or staff, please directly address the land zoning as relates to open space ordinances and protection during tonight's comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Andrew Guthrie.
Good evening, Mayor McNally, esteemed councilors. My name is Andrew Guthrie and I am representing the Westy Dog Park Guardians. The Guardians stand ready to fulfill our mission of being responsible community partners with the city of Westminster. That doesn't mean just the city government, it means being a good partner with citizens too. While drafting our research and recommendations, we spoke with residents and experts representing environmental concerns, park neighbors, cyclists, local businesses, ADA park users, parents with young kids, everyone we could think of. We even presented Who's CAP members with a draft so we could include their feedback. To date, that group has not reached out to engage us, but the door is and continues to remain open. In listening to this diverse group, we made some hard decisions. One, completely restrict dogs from the western 600-plus acres. Quite a few Guardians and park users prefer that area and listening to the environmental concerns, we want PRL to be able to restore that area with minimal outside impact. Two, close popular social trails, including one of my personal favorites, to create larger swaths of open space between the trails. Three, not recommending additional parking. Again, we want to respect the land. With quantity of visitors being cited as a concern, we listened and included this recommendation. Now, I feel the need to dispel some misinformation floating around. No, our volunteers operate, no, having volunteers operate heavy machinery is not part of our plan. Truth be told, it'd be really fun to play with heavy machinery, but that's not part of the plan. The Guardians' research and recommendations focus on high-impact, low-cost solutions to help preserve the land for generations to come. Yes, there are some high-cost proposals such as rerouting the Greenway Trail, but it's important to note that assisting in grant research and writing was also included in our plan. Here are a few simple, simply implemented project volunteers can spearhead. First, hold cleanup days. Not just poop, we want to work with the rangers to see how else we can maintain the park. Two, having trail ambassadors. Once there's an official trail map, let us help keep visitors on the right trails. Three, fundraising strategies. From memorial benches to trail sponsorship, we have a host of ideas to help fund park upkeep. As always, this is a great opportunity for citizens to work with the city. We look forward to being part of the ongoing stewardship of this area that's so important to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cindy Stoudt. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Cindy Stoudt. Thanks again for the opportunity to speak. First of all, also thank you for the direction you've given to staff to retain the 470 acres of off-leash access. For your citizens and all the users of the Who's Dog Park. of off-leash access for your citizens and all the users of the Who's Dog Park. From day one, we've pledged to be a partner with the city of Westminster to care for this place. We intend to stay fully involved and to help preserve the area while keeping it off-leash and also begin the process of putting into place an organization to collaborate with the city in an ongoing fashion. However, the Guardians do have some anxiety in this process. In response to core requests that we made last month, we received the original ERO environmental report, which did not even mention a reduction in the off-leash area. Comments contained within that original report, as noted by park staff, disputed some of ERO's findings and asked for changes to the report. One email from park staff to ERO dated September 7, 2023, stated staff's intended plan to reduce the off-leash area to a 30-ish acre size. It was also requested of ERO to add to the recommendations and report to help support this case. Based upon this feedback from park staff, ERO changed the final report to fit the parks' department's plan. This confirms that the ERO report is not an independent third-party environmental report. It was co-written by park staff and ERO. However, the city has been publicly representing this as an independent third-party report for five months and has used it as the sole underlying reason for the proposed dog park acreage reduction. We also have receipts for expenses incurred by the city for this project. To date, $60,439.50 of taxpayer money has been spent to convince the taxpayers to do something that was parks' plan all along. Understandably, our confidence in staff is low right now, but this space is what keeps us going and we will continue to educate users and volunteer our time to keep it maintained properly. We do have a final request for council. On July 8th, make a permanent decision with no trial period. Codify your direction to staff to keep the 470 acres off-leash and begin plans to maintain the area as was written in the original 2014 open space stewardship plan. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tracy Hagee.
First, we would like to update you on the support numbers. We have almost 500 subscribers to our newsletter, and at 6:00 PM today, we have over 10,000 signatures on our change.org petition. In 2001, I was living in a condo with a Dalmatian and a lab, who I would try to wear out by playing fetch with them in the small space behind where we lived. That was when a neighbor introduced us to the off-leash dog park. We circled the surrounding neighborhoods until we found our home, and we have lived there ever since. When we bought our house, it was marketed as being next to the off-leash dog park, and this was definitely the selling point for us. We looked at a few houses in surrounding neighborhoods and were willing to pay the extra price tag to be as close to the dog park as we could get. The price tag on the houses that backed to and overlooked the off-leash dog park are still considered to be valued higher than other nearby homes, as reflected in a recent communication with a local realtor, who wrote in an email that her buyer bought a house further into the Countryside neighborhood with the exact same floor plan as one that backed to Sims and overlooked the off-leash dog park, and the appraiser valued the home that overlooked the dog park at $59,000 more than the one further into the neighborhood. In an article entitled "Five Neighborhood Amenities That Increase Your Home Value", number three was dog parks, which quote, "might feel like an oddly specific amenity that would increase home value." But the truth is that more people in the US have dogs now than ever before. In 2017, 48.3 million US households reported owning a dog. In 2023, that number is 69 million, which represents an increase of 43%. Additionally, people are trying to spend more time outside. One survey showed the average American spends 21% more time outdoors now than they did at the beginning of the pandemic, which increases the demand for safe outdoor space, especially in cities. As a result, houses located conveniently to dog parks become more valuable and home prices in those areas rise. As Trulia recently reported, dog parks also raise neighborhood home values by improving an area's sense of community. Over the 22 years that I have lived next to the off-leash dog park, we are now on our fifth dog. We have watched the park grow and shift over the years. I have read the 2014 stewardship plan and hope that the simple and cost-effective recommendations outlined in this plan are implemented so we can continue to have this dog park remain beautiful and accessible to off-leash dogs and the people who exercise with them. This dog park is the sole reason we bought our house here and that we continue to live here. On my evening walks with my neighbor, we often comment that we live in the most beautiful place in Denver Metro. I would also say it is the happiest place, because what can make you smile more than dogs running, playing and wagging their tails? I have included the excerpt from the communication with the realtor and the articles in the handouts I gave you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Aubrey Hicks. Welcome.
Hello again. Okay, thanks for your time. I'm going to read you guys a list. National parks, city parks, playgrounds, athletic fields, hiking trails, most reservoirs, most open spaces, and with the exception of the Chatfield and Cherry Creek off-leash dog areas, state parks. What do all those places have in common? It's a list of outdoor recreational opportunities where dogs are not allowed off-leash. There are approximately 6,600 acres of parks and open space in Westminster, and the dog park accounts for less than 7% of that total. Who's is enjoyed by folks who run, walk, birdwatch, watch, do photography, train, cycle, without dogs. It's enjoyed by people of all ages, including a 10-day-old baby I saw a couple weeks ago swaddled against its mother's breast. It's enjoyed by the mobility impaired and is ADA accessible in many areas, as somebody mentioned earlier. And yes, the majority of the people who go to the eastern part of Who's bring their dogs, but off-leash dogs do not inhibit anyone else from enjoying this space. Even still, someone who would rather enjoy parks and open space without off-leash dogs? Let me give you a list of options for that. The other 6,130 acres of the city's parks and open space, which include the western 600 acres of Who's. Stanley Lake Park is walking distance and just across the street. Across the other side of the open space, one can find 5,237 acres at Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge. Or if they, or they could head to the numerous state and national parks in Colorado and beyond. Side note, if someone's dog is reactive and cannot be around other dogs, then they can walk their dogs on leash in most of the other areas I just listed, or even right outside their houses on their sidewalk. We should not be taking away spaces like this. We should partner with neighboring communities and encourage them to designate more land for off-leash use. This would serve more dog owners and could even alleviate some of the traffic at the Who's Dog Park. Please continue to allow this 6.4% of Westminster's parks and open space for off-leash dog recreation as it has been a dog park for decades. Please zone it properly. And for those who might be confused, no one's giving the land away, despite that allegation being distributed recently in some flyers I've seen around town. You know, I don't have kids, and I don't particularly love being around them, but you also don't see me asking to remove schools and parks with playgrounds. Instead, I just don't go to these places. If someone wants to go to a park or an open space without dogs, they can go literally anywhere else. I appreciate your continued logic and thoughtfulness as you approach your July 8th vote. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tonya Yost. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time tonight. I am here again in support of retaining the off-leash use at Who's, and please accept my sincere appreciation to all of you for taking the time to consider options and ideas for maintaining the 400-plus acres of off-leash use at Westminster Hills Open Space and listening to all of us here tonight. I have been a frequent user of the dog park since 2010, and in 2019, I applied to volunteer with the city and was accepted to join the Parks and Advisory Board for the Parks and Recreation and Libraries and Open Space Department. I volunteered for that because I specifically cared about preserving and protecting our parks and open spaces, all of them. I was also recently a member of the Who's CAP. Recently, I heard a recounting of the CAP board process, which did not align with my personal experience. I personally believe that the application rules should have been enforced, that all participants should have been residents of Westminster. The application process and the selection of members should possibly have been more transparent or perhaps overseen by this board, I'm sorry, this council. The survey percentage results should have been considered in the CAP representation pool, and the process required a more experienced facilitator. And the meetings required structure with a clear agenda and post-meeting minutes. At the end, four diverse members did a grape on a map and a trail plan idea. That specific map and idea was not shown to council in the June 3 presentation. I also personally believe that the mayor has accurately recounted the CAP process to council on several occasions. It is appropriate to identify areas of improvement if the city chooses to implement a CAP for other issues in the future. While the Who's provides different experiences to different people, it is clearly a very special place for all. I currently find that the park is not a wasteland, but rather an amazing place, and the spring rains have allowed the grasses, flowers and birds to flourish. I find beauty everywhere, and when I hike at Who's, I often prefer to walk way out to the western portion of the 600 acres, especially to that area at the top of the boundary between Westminster and Broomfield where the bench is. Not everyone knows there's a bench there, because it's a pretty far walk, and often I only see Mike, the ranger, on the electric motorcycle out there, but my dog is on leash. I am very concerned about any construction or digging in that area, and to me personally, that give of that space, knowing I may never be able to walk there again with my on-leash dog, was a huge sacrifice. And to hear at the last meeting that it was not really considered a give was very, very disappointing. Perhaps that should just stay with a few trails allowed for dog use on leash only. I would like to commend the staff and city council for all of the parking enforcement that's ongoing. I personally believe it has remedied a lot of problems. All along Sims and 100th, it's much better.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And before we call the next person, can I say, would you like a break? You've been going at it two hours, you have one hour to go. Break? Five minutes? Yeah, five minutes. Yeah, five minutes. Mahanes. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Rose Nama-Yunis with the Guardians. And some people think that dog owners don't care about the environment, and I strongly disagree. I care just as much as anyone else, and I'm actually concerned with the current approach to land management. PRL uses IPM to deal with noxious weeds, which includes the use of pesticides. And while these chemicals are approved by the EPA, there's a lot of research that shows this approach is very outdated and disturbs the soil even more and creates conditions for weeds to come back stronger. I'm afraid if we continue to do this, that the efforts to restore the land are going to be unsuccessful ultimately, and the blame is going to be all on the dogs. And I've also heard some concern just from different people about PRL not giving enough notice when pesticides are being sprayed. Also, I provided a handout of Be Happy Lands, a project of Turtle Lake Refuge, which provides regenerative land stewardship throughout Colorado. Turtle Lake Refuge, along with city council members and volunteers from the community, helped establish the movement of organic parks in Durango since 2008. They've successfully managed over a third of Durango's parks and the Anamos River Bike Trail, Mankos Dog Park, and many more listed in the handout. Be Happy Lands' approach begins with a deeper understanding of noxious weeds, or AKA pioneer species. They view them as nature's frontline workforce, which helps transform disturbed land into more stabilized fertile ecosystems. The handout I gave also gives more detail on what these pioneer species do for the soil and for us. Be Happy Lands' idea is to work with nature and not against it. Their methods include adding natural organic soil amendments such as fungal soup, compost tea, biochar, also manually harvesting pioneer plants as needed, seeding the area with native grasses, and beneficial wildflowers, and much more included in the handout as well. I spoke with Katrina Blair, the founder of Turtle Lake Refuge, and she said the cost would be reasonable, and if we'd like to work together, to reach out to her. I believe we can also fix our dog poo problem, not just for the open space, but our planet as a whole. Our neighbors in Lafayette at the Great Bark Dog Park have started a new compost program that reduces the methane building up in our landfills and providing compostable bags, and they contract Pet Scoop to compost the waste. It's a new program, but it still seems like it's being successful so far. In addition to these ecological solutions, urban grazing is another approach to managing open spaces, Boulder does as well. I hope that you consider these innovative ways to restore our open space that mimic nature in the most ecologically responsible way. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Laura Knopkin. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Laura Knopkin, Westminster resident and environmental engineer, and I'm here to talk to you tonight about wildlife and scale. Loss of biodiversity is one of the major environmental crises we face today, so the distinction of a species as endangered is massively important and carries a lot of weight. According to Colorado Parks and Wildlife, in the state of Colorado, there are 21 endangered species. None of these species live in the Westminster Hills. In Colorado, we also have 12 threatened species. I researched every single one of the 33 combined endangered and threatened species in Colorado and concluded that all but two do not have suitable or historic habitat in the dog park at Westminster Hills. Those two species that do are the state-threatened burrowing owl and the federally endangered black-footed ferret. I think we're all aware of the burrowing owls by now, and I do agree that the owls do not nest in the eastern section because of the presence of human activity. However, ERO did not observe any burrowing owls living on the property at all during their survey last summer, so they are not always there. Furthermore, the International Red List of Threatened Species ranks the burrowing owl as a species of least concern. So not to trivialize the importance of protecting this owl, but I do want to set the record straight on what we're actually going to impact by keeping the dog park. The second species with a potential habitat is the black-footed ferret, which has been gone from Colorado since the 1940s. Conservation groups have fought hard to save the black-footed ferret from the brink of extinction. This is a hyper-focused conservation effort, and the metro Denver Boulder open space areas have not been selected as a reintroduction site. Interestingly, the black-footed ferret has found success in re-establishing in the Rocky Mountain Arsenal, which brings me to my next topic that I wanted to address, and that is scale. The Rocky Mountain Arsenal is 16,000 acres in size, which provides considerable amount of space for various species to thrive. In comparison, we have 1,000 acres at Westminster Hills, and the 400 in question for the dog park is on the edge of suburbia. It is a small slice of land. There are 12 million acres of short grass prairie in Colorado. Yes, it is true that the short grass prairie is a threatened ecosystem, but it is not because of our 400-acre dog park. It's due to the millions of acres lost agriculture and urban development. Part of the reason we have land connecting Westminster Hills up through Boulder is because Rocky Flats used to be a nuclear weapons manufacturing plant, and the land is too contaminated to do anything else with it. I've been extremely frustrated by the misinformation campaign against the dog park that has been going on. The incorrect use of the word endangered has had cascading effects, and now we have people handing out flyers in the neighborhood, fear-mongering that the dogs are destroying the land and harming endangered species, but there isn't a single endangered species out there. Our 400 acres is hardly being destroyed. It is full of life, and anyone could go see for themselves. I think the fact that PRL staff had to request for ERO to include the recommendation to reduce the off-leash area, and then to turn around and tell the public that it came from a third-party environmental assessment speaks for itself. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dale Pugh. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Dale Pugh, and I am a former deputy district attorney for Adams County and city attorney in Broomfield. I know that everyone on this council has received a report that was prepared by the Guardians concerning the violations of city policy by certain personnel of the city of Westminster, including what was spoken about by Cindy Stout regarding the ERO Resources Corporation environmental study. I am here to state the obvious. You cannot have an independent, you cannot commission an independent study and then tell the people what to write, and that's exactly what was done here. You've been provided the proof of that through the court requests we've made and the emails that we've obtained. It is amazing that that happened, and if it certainly had happened when I was with the city attorney's office in Broomfield, we never would have become a county. So that is an extremely serious issue, and there are others in that report that I will not speak about because the manipulation of that environmental report is in and of itself an outrageous thing on the part of certain employees of the city of Westminster that obviously have their own agenda. To those who oppose the maintaining the off-leash dog park in its current status, I would ask you to find out what the facts are. I have dealt with facts my entire life, and facts are the only thing that matter. If you research the facts, if you learn the facts, you will find that the vast majority of the issues that you are concerned about are not the fault of the dogs. They are the fault of poor management and poor maintenance of the dog park by the city of Westminster, and by the discouragement of the many, many volunteers who want to help the city do the right thing, and the loss of signage, the loss of receptacles, not allowing the volunteers to go out and clean up when they want to. All of those things are idiotic, and the Guardians are here to solve all of those problems. For those who think that we are a minority of only 300, as you've already heard, there were 10,000 signers to our petition. There are only 350 signers to the opposition petition. Eighty-nine percent of those surveyed have said that they want to keep the dog park the way it is, and we would ask this council to listen to their constituents, understand the facts, and leave the dog park alone.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jason Mule. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jason Mule. I've been a Westminster resident for 13 years now, and I'm here to try to talk you guys into leaving the doggy Disneyland alone. We call it the doggy Disneyland because it is the most magical place on earth. When we take our dogs there, you can see it in their face. For those of you that have kids and have taken them to Disneyland, and you see what that does to a little kid, that happens to my dogs every time I go there. I have three fur babies, one of which is a husky. Anybody that has owned a husky can relate to my stories with that. My husky is very high maintenance, requires to be walked basically twice a day, and if you don't walk her, she gets what we like to call the zoomies. Anybody that has seen this knows what I'm talking about. She is very high energy, and if we don't run her, she runs herself around our house, bouncing off of furniture, knocking down pictures, and getting her energy out. So for me, the dog park is basically Disneyland for my dogs because it takes care of their mental health, it takes care of their socialization, it's everything my dogs need. When we take our dogs back from the dog park, every single time, they're done for the rest of the day. Two hours of running in that dog park is all my dogs need to lay down and be happy for the rest of the day. I'll keep it short and sweet. It's been a long night, and quite frankly, I'm tired. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. The next speaker is Krista Trical. Welcome.
Hi there, thank you. Thanks. My name is Krista Trical. I've been before this council previously and shared my Golden Poop Award with everyone, but today I wanted to just tell you a little bit about me, who I am, why the Westminster Hills open space off-leash dog area is so important to me. I'm an oncology nurse of many decades, of many years, a couple decades now, and have been a resident of Westminster since 99. I have lived in countryside Legacy Ridge and now Walnut Creek neighborhood. I bought all of my houses because of their proximity to the dog park. Westminster Hills open space and off-leash dog park has been a place I have gone for exercise, beautiful scenery, and respite, always bringing my dogs along. As I previously mentioned to this council, I've been bringing my dogs there since there were cattle grazing, water in the pond, and plenty of prairie dogs chirping away. And back then, there were fewer people that came to the park, but my dogs still loved it, and so did I. I specifically chose my current house because it backs directly to the open space and dog park. At the time, I purchased my most recent home, I had three dogs that loved being able to run and play and sniff off-leash in this park. When I saw the property, I knew this was the one, and with all the years I've been enjoying the park, I now have a couple of my dogs' ashes that have made their way to the park as well for eternal off-leash play and playtime. It's a treasured place. I currently foster rescue dogs and often take them there when they're starting to build confidence and learn leash manners. Growing their confidence is vital to them finding a good home. My property value has increased significantly in the last 12 years since I've lived here, and I know it's because of the unique setting with the spectacular view that I have from my deck, and I invite any of you to come and check it out because I'm pretty sure mine is the best in the neighborhood. Just saying. So we have exceptional sunsets and clear views of the dog park from there. And if I was to sell my home, the dog park would be the focus of the listing because it means that much to others as well. Through this whole review process for the park, I really have been conflicted about the status of the environment out there. I support the work the Westy Guardians have done and submitted. There are clearly shortcomings and inconsistencies in the PRL research and recommendations and management pertaining to this area. But I've also witnessed daily destruction and disrespect of the park over the years as well. I wish that over the last decades, the park was not allowed to fall into the current environmental state that it is in, and that enforcement wasn't so lax out there. I value the native wildlife and native landscape and support the efforts to correct years of neglect and disregard that has brought us to this moment. If some of the acreage of the off-leash area needs to be set aside for improvement of the ecosystem, I would support that to a certain extent. I recognize that is not the popular opinion seen by the community surveys, and I do have caveats for that statement. I would need evidence-based and strategically selected acreage that makes sense for the recovery of the native ecosystem, and I'm not totally convinced that is possible.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Elizabeth Sullivan. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor McNally and city councilors. My name is Elizabeth Sullivan. I'm a resident of Westminster, here to speak about Westminster Hills open space. I was drawn to living in Westminster because of the city's high value for nature. Setting aside 17% of the city's land as open space is no small feat, especially considering how quickly the Front Range is being swallowed up by development. At this point, you're probably aware Westminster Hills is connected to a larger 40,000-acre patch of land that continues to great western Rocky Flats and Boulder open space land. Boulder Open Space Land. Yes, Westminster Hills is incredible on its own, but it's also amazing because it's part of something far larger than its 1,000-acre boundaries. It's fragile, it has great potential for native beauty, and it's being deteriorated. Just because there's grass out there doesn't mean it's native, and without the native plants, it can't support the native animals. Much, if not most, of the life on the eastern 470 acres is non-native. There's an entire system of life out there, and the city chose to be stewards of it. Rezoning this property for continued damage is unacceptable. I realize that dogs and their owners need places for recreation. 470 acres is an unbelievably large chunk of land to be turned over to dogs. That's more than three times larger than the current largest off-leash dog park in the country. Must it be all 470 or nothing? About a month ago, I was on a bird walk at Stanley Lake, an official city activity. Stanley Lake is not an off-leash space, but the ranger with us on the walk was bitten by a dog. The dog was small and on leash, but it made me think, what if it wasn't? Some people are saying that Westminster Hills is open to all, but that's not really the case. No matter how many times people say it, it's not true. Is it open? Yes, but is it safe and reasonably accessible for all? Not as it currently stands. For example, even the most docile dogs can be unpredictable, and children are vulnerable to them. Is it reasonable to expect a parent to trust unfamiliar dogs around their child? Is it reasonable to expect a runner to choose to use the space when there is potential for being chased by dogs? What about small dogs or dogs who have experienced trauma? Yes, it's open, but not actually usable to those people. And while it's hard to believe, there are people out there who don't love dogs but want to enjoy the space too. The little act of leashing an animal would open the space safely to a wider array of people. Why do their concerns and wants matter less than the preferences of off-leash dog owners? This is not diversity of use, it is an equity of access, and it's not inclusive. Yes, dog owners should have access to this land. Yes, a good-sized dog park would be nice, but rezoning 470 acres to the detriment of the native ecosystem and exclusion of so many people seems a terrible decision. This space should be for more than just people who are comfortable with off-leash dogs. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jeb Benson. Welcome.
Thank you. I was going to keep this really short because it's been a long night. I think the last speaker, though, maybe will have me extend a little bit. My name's Jeb Benson. I'm a resident of Arvada. So, just for all the residents of Arvada who use the park, thank you very much for maintaining it. It really is a special place. Personally, I, I think my three favorite things in Colorado are the Rocky Mountains, red rocks, and that open space for dogs. It truly is a special place, and I'm just really appreciative of all the work that the Guardians have put into this, and that's why I'm here frankly, because as much as I use it, I feel like I just, I know you've heard every single argument tonight, so I'm not going to belabor that point. There's nothing I could say to add to that chorus, but I just feel like it's my responsibility to do my part. Along those lines, I, I hear people occasionally say something about, well, they're not residents. I would just say, like, if that's an issue, you know, please, I think, those of us who come from Arvada, from Denver, I mean, I know there's a lot of reciprocity across all these great open spaces we have, but I've seen this model of citizen groups with government work very well in other areas, like the Nordic skiing community of all things, where a city maintains the trails, but there's a very active citizen group, very passionate, very intelligent, very well organized, and it becomes sort of a badge of honor to, for example, buy a pin that's maybe $40 or $50 a year that kind of helps support a lot of the activities on the park. So, if that's at all a concern for the city, just from a funding standpoint, we appreciate all the work that's gone in there the last couple of years. I'm sure that we'd be open to that. I've been going out there for a lot of years, and then just, just to wrap up, I've never seen anything like people being attacked, any lack of diversity or inclusion in that space. In fact, it's quite the opposite. Where you see all these issues, as someone mentioned before, is when you've got a lot of dogs on leash in a tight area, that is just a, that is a joyous space. And if somebody doesn't feel included there and is afraid, I mean, again, there's so many areas to go. I would, you know, maybe that's part of the thing the Guardians could do, is like, help introduce people to that space and walk with them and kind of show them the joys of walking in a space with all these dogs off-leash. It's just, it's just such a special environment. So, I am 100% in support of keeping that space as an off-leash park. And again, I really appreciate all the work you guys do sustaining it over all these years. So, thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tom Jurgens. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor and city councillors. I am Tom Jurgens, a Westminster resident. The Westminster Hills Open Space Dog Park is a unique city asset. It has been in existence for more than two decades. Historically, it was used for grazing livestock. It was not a short grass prairie. I have visited the park many times with my dogs over the past few years. My dogs and I love the park. The dog owners respect the park. The vast majority of owners keep their dogs close to the paths. They also pick up after their dogs. The foliage away from the paths is not affected by people in dog traffic. It is lush with rainfall determining the height of the plants. The dogs in the park are well behaved. My dogs have benefited from visiting a non-threatening off-leash venue. They have become more sociable with the guards through dogs and people. I have never seen a dog attack another dog or a person. They are well behaved. I have spoken to several visitors to the dog park. Many of the visitors, they do not reside in Westminster, also frequent nearby businesses. They grab a bite to eat or purchase something to drink. Retain the dog park as is. Actually, adding one more bridge over the creek would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Leslie B.
Welcome. Good evening, esteemed members of the council and Mayor McNally. I've come up here to say, everyone is entitled to their own opinions, but no one is entitled to their own facts. There's no question that the surveys and presentation of their results were biased, but they were biased in favor of people like Ms. Gosser, sorry, Gossenheimer, I guess, and they still came out in the minority. There were three surveys, and only people calling, and the only people calling for a fourth aren't happy because they're not getting their way. If you don't like walking or cycling near off-leash dogs or you prefer to keep your dogs on leash, Stanley Lake exists literally right across the street, and there's five other bike paths within four miles, plus the US 36 Bike Way. PRL keeps parroting that Short Grass Prairie is the fastest disappearing ecosystem on the planet, when in reality, is that it doesn't even crack the top 10. You can look it up. This is not the only bit that PRL has been dishonest about, and I'm sure you have read all about it. I would like to draw attention to a small piece of dishonesty in a sea of deceit that I'm sure you are all aware of, and I would like to remind you that it's not just the Guardians who've kept their eyes open through this process. Over the last couple of months, under the direction of PRL higher-ups, four-by-six-inch signs bringing awareness to the possible future of the Westminster Hills Off-Leash Area were removed, and two members of the Guardians were menaced by rangers for doing something, for being accused of doing something that they were not doing, which is littering. City staff indicated that rangers showed up every couple of days to remove all signage not placed by staff. If this is the case, then why were there signs advertising a business located in Broomfield left up, which is still there, and for nearly a month, as well as signs advertising Girl Scout cookies? Why were peaceful citizens harassed for spreading information but a guy whom I have nothing against, in fact, I buy from him, is allowed to sell his wares tax-free without being subject to the same aggressive treatment? I believe there has been an agenda pushed. I would like to commend a few members of council for going out to the property at 10499 Sim Street for themselves not being shepherded by PRL, and remind city council as a whole that we, the citizens, voted them in because we believe that they have our best interests at heart, and that the city and citizens of Westminster deserve better than to have dishonest staff with an agenda to push calling the shots. I invite city council to walk up the trails to the top of the hill. If you do, you'll notice the birds singing, unbothered by the dogs and people, and you'll notice the foliage looks no different than at Stanley Lake or Greenbelt Plateau. And for the record, I've worked hands-on with dogs for nearly 13 years and studied canine behavior for just over 20 years, and I can tell you from theory and practice, conflicts between canines happen in small enclosed areas where dogs aren't allowed to get away. This extends to being off-leash because a well-socialist dog will naturally avoid conflict when possible, and that is a fact. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tom Lampo. Are you breaking over there? Welcome.
Hey, thank you very much. All right, hello, Westminster. I'm Tom Lampo. It's good to be here. I'm here to lift up Westminster to the Lord in prayer. We are living in unique times. What we are experiencing is not Republican versus Democrat, or probe this versus anti-that, or any way you want to divide humanity, pit people against each other. It's good versus evil, and God has already won. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus's name, you are the God of Westminster, and we humbly come before you and ask that you make Westminster a beacon of your light. You are holy, the Lord God Almighty. No one is before you, and you answer to no one. No one is greater than you. Grace and mercy is the foundation of your love for us. Without these, we would perish and have no hope. You are truth. You possess all the truth, and you will reveal it all. In Proverbs 19:21, you state, "Many plans are in man's heart, but the Lord's decree will prevail." Man's plans will not succeed because you will step in and shut those plans down, and everyone will know you are the Lord of lords and king of kings. Father, I lift up our government to you. In your great wisdom, you have established all of them to bring glory to your name. In Romans 13:1, it states, "Let everyone be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except that which God has established." The authorities that exist have been established by God. You've placed the people you want to lead in the positions they are in. Your word is clear that they are subject to your authority. In Psalm 103:19, states, "The Lord has established his throne in heaven, and his kingdom rules over all." You are the higher authority. Be with the individuals in our government because the positions you have them are very difficult. Touch their lives and guide them in their work. Give them your wisdom in their decisions, and grant them your compassion in their interactions. Father, bring unity to us. We need to draw strength from each other, and we need to strengthen each other. We need people with different opinions, different backgrounds, different beliefs to come together. The differences we have is not the fight we are in. The differences only serve to divide and weaken us when we need unity and strength. You tell us how to value each other in Philippians 2, 3 through 4. Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit. Rather, in humility, value others above yourselves, not looking to your own interests, but to each of you, to the interests of the others. Help us deceive past ourselves and to find commonality in our humanity. Your victory is secure. In your name we pray. Amen. Thank you, and you all have a nice night.
Thank you. The next speaker is Christopher Stimson. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, city councillors, city manager, and city staff, I have come here tonight not to talk about the dog park. I don't have a dog in this fight. Sorry. The dog park in Westminster, right. On March 13th, 1966, 43-year-old Thomas Hamilton walked into Dunblane Primary School in Scotland armed with four handguns. In the space of three to four minutes, he killed 16 children and one teacher and wounded 15 others before killing himself. This is not only the deadliest mass shooting in British history, it is also nearly 60 years ago, the last school shooting to happen in Britain. Why would this be? Less than seven weeks after what became known as the Dunblane massacre, Martin Bryant killed 35 people and wounded 23 others, including many children, in a popular tourist destination in Port Arthur, Tasmania. What was the aftermath? There are at least two lessons to be learned from these incidents. Firstly, as an aftermath, the British and Australian governments actually took effective action on the issue of gun control. Wow, and these are the same species as people who live in this country. In the UK, two new firearms acts were passed outlawing the private ownership of most handguns, with the exception of historic handguns. The Australian government restricted private ownership of semi-automatic rifles and introduced uniform firearm licensing. There's a lesson if we want to learn it. What's the other lesson? It's this, that there are many places where the prevalence and predominance of firearms are to be expected. Shooting ranges, law enforcement situations, military environments. But there are more places where such presence of firearms is quite inappropriate. Schools, tourist sites, public gathering areas, and as far as our state government is concerned, with the exception of law enforcement, government buildings. I've been in this chamber on many occasions where tempests have risen, where serious accusations have been made, and when the rhetoric has become hostile and competitive. I, and I suspect many others, would be appalled to contemplate a time when such interactions were accompanied by the brandishing of firearms. Let us not entertain a quite unnecessary resolution, now or in two weeks' time, to promote the proliferation of firearms in a place where it is inappropriate, and by the way, not allowed by state law. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mary Berg. Welcome.
Thank you very much. You're listening, I'm sure. As you each one took an oath of office to represent the best interests of the citizens, I would think that the 10,000 petition signers for keeping the park as it is would be enough to let you know that's a way for you to honor your oath. I'm actually here to talk about the over probably a half a billion dollars that has been proposed in ways of spending regarding the water project. As it is important that you honor your oath of office here, we need to have free market, competitive bidding for every process of what's being proposed. So far, it is just following along and going to get along with what's been suggested. There has been no competitive free market bidding. And to strap the households up to maybe approximately $16,000 in this new project, maybe my figures are underestimated, but whatever it is, it hasn't been proceeded properly. And because your oath is to represent the citizens and not special interests, it doesn't make sense that the charge that, I have a property where I didn't use any, there was no bathing, there was no washing, there was literally no water usage almost at all, and it's $52 a month. It's unnecessary that the three or four other surrounding water districts charge a fraction of what we've charged, and we've got senior water rights. So, I just think that, as with the dog park, it's very important that this whole system with Semper be put on hold because you haven't really done the work that needs to be done to confirm the facts. We're just going along because maybe there's some pressure somewhere. So, we respect your hard work, and it seems like it's never-ending because there's so many issues. But please do the right thing on the water, and do not spend this money so recklessly.
Thank you. The next speaker is Karen Colaviti. Thank you. The next speaker is Karen Colaviti. Welcome.
Hello. I was incentivized to come here tonight, even though it seems like a waste of time to speak to city council. But I had written some public comment, which apparently did not get into public comment. And it's like, well, I guess the only way some of my ideas can be expressed is to come and speak, even though it seems like a futile effort. But talking about the water treatment plant, and I attended the town hall meeting with regard to the budget a few months back. And there was a big pie chart of the expenditures that are going to be made in October. And about two-thirds of that half a billion that Mary mentioned was towards the water treatment plant. Then we had these feel-good sessions at each table with the councillor. And of course, the major concern, the major interest in the city of Westminster is open space and trails and that kind of thing. And it would be much nicer to know that we're spending money to incorporate what's of interest to people rather than what's of interest to HDR water consultants to keep their doors open on Seventeenth Street down in Denver. Yeah, I mean, fifteen percent of our land is devoted to open space. It should be more like thirty percent. And in fact, the water treatment plant is planned on two hundred acres of prime wildlife habitat. We're talking about wildlife habitat, including endangered species. There are burrowing owls, which are endangered species. And they're there over at the water treatment plant site. And there's no concern about that. It's like, okay, let's screw over that site, but worry about the dog park, which is a concern. But some of these other sites that are more worth conserving than even the dog park are given no consideration at all. And it's being done to facilitate, you know, companies that make money off of this stuff. It's not being done for the benefit of people in the Westminster area. We need to do a lot more research, a lot... Competitive bidding as far as design, truly, that should be done. That was not done with the water treatment plant. There's many things I'd like to say that weren't even... I included in my public comment, which was not published. And I would like for that to be published next week.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tim Peg.
Hi, I'm Tim Peg. I am a resident of Countryside. I sit on the Planning Commission, but my comment tonight is only my opinion and not the opinion of the Planning Commission. I actually did not come prepared to speak on the dog park, but I do have two questions that popped into my head about that tonight, which is, do we have any obligation under federal or state law to take any action on the dog park? And if so, precisely what is that? I think the answer to those questions could really help come to some kind of compromise in that discussion. But what I came to talk about tonight was the Transit Oriented Communities Bill. The short story is that, from my perspective, that bill is consistent with free-market principles as compared to the status quo. It is consistent with environmental sustainability as well as housing affordability. There's no doubt that that bill presents some challenges to our community, but one of those challenges is not water. Section twenty-nine dash thirty-seven dash two oh four subsection five lays out a process where cities can explain to the state that they need their housing opportunity goal adjusted on the grounds of limited water supply. So again, that is just simply not something we need to worry about with respect to that bill. And that's all I came to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is John Palmer. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. First, a little housekeeping. Councillor Azadi, my apologies for comments I made at the last council meeting. Secondly, it sure would be nice if we could get audio out in the lobby. I don't know what's going on. We had guests out there that there was no audio. I mean, we spent, what, two million dollars? At least a million, I know of. We can't get audio in the lobby. Next, an update on Knox Court. I had asked Deputy City Manager Jody Andrews about this because there was supposedly a sheriff sale last month. What did it sell for? Who bought it? And where's the city stand with the lien that was attached to that property? So if I could get answers to that tonight, I would appreciate it because it was asked prior to tonight. Next, let's talk about Senate Bill twenty-four one thirty-one. I don't think we should pass that resolution. I believe we should go with the resolution that this... Or, excuse me, I believe we should go with what your seven senators and twenty-eight House of Representatives voted to put that law in action. Those were people that the citizens elected, who you also probably elected. So I really don't think we need to add more guns to the situation. Right now, we have, what, a minimum of three police officers in here carrying, possibly four, with the officers with the deputy chief and the chief. By doing this, you're opening the door. If you allow one council member to carry a concealed gun in here, you've allowed the whole community. Is that why we need more guns in this chamber? And if you do make a resolution to not go with that, that's not supporting our police. That's not speaking highly of them. You don't believe in them. You don't believe in their abilities. I mean, they're here to protect us, meaning you and the people here. I don't want to get caught in some crazy crossfire some evening. So I hope that you really think about that. I know the vote before was four, two, and one. I think we need to think about that. Dog park, let's talk about that. Dollars and cents, that's what makes sense. We're talking three point eight to approximately five million dollars for this dog park. Is that fair to the other residents? You were all here, voted to be fiscally responsible. You know, it's not about the feelings. All these people come up here with their feelings. It's not about feelings. It's not about your dogs' feelings. It's... Let's talk about the facts. Let's talk about the dollars and cents. Again, it's not about feelings. We've been down that road before. The gentleman that gets up here and says he's got ten thousand signatures, how many of those are registered Westminster voters? I asked him, and he couldn't prove it. He didn't feel the need to prove that. Again, they're spouting bad information, just like their claiming staff is. And I don't appreciate them bad-mouthing staff.
Thank you. The next speaker is Gary Shea. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor McNally and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. We had five minutes prepared. And President of the Westminster Historical Society, Linda Graybell, has been kind enough to help me finish this evening. And the city clerk has been kind enough to pass out the packet, too, so you've got that early. So we'd like to share some history with you that the members of the Westminster Historical Society have collected and archived over the last sixty years and readily share with the public each and every day. This is the history of Dr. Russell and Estelle... I'm sorry, Dr. Richard and Estelle Russell. Richard Russell was born on March eighth eighteen sixty-five in Viola, Illinois. Richard attended Viola Public School, graduated in eighteen eighty-three, enrolled in Monmouth College in Illinois, where he received a Bachelor's of Science degree. And in eighteen eighty-nine, after graduation, he returned to Viola, where he was principal of the public school for three years. He then entered Rush Medical College in Colorado, in Chicago, Illinois, where he studied until he became ill with tuberculosis. To recover his health, he was advised to relocate to a Western locality. He moved to Denver, Colorado in eighteen ninety-five and registered at Old Gross Medical School. And Dr. Russell received his degree in medicine on June twentieth nineteen hundred. And upon graduation, he moved to Chama, New Mexico, and practiced medicine for two years. While in Chama, Dr. Russell met Estelle Graham. She had come to Chama from Iowa to work as a bookkeeper for her uncle, Ed Biggs, who owned the large lumber mill in town. Estelle was the daughter of G. H. and Anna Wells Graham, and she was born in Tama, Iowa, June twenty-first eighteen sixty-eight. Her grandmother, Mrs. Alicia Wells, happened to be a descendant of Ezra Cornell, who was the founder of Cornell University. On October eleventh nineteen hundred, at the home of F. A. Bissell in Colorado Springs, Dr. Russell was united in marriage to Estelle Graham. The newlywed couple moved to Arvada in nineteen oh two, where Dr. Russell began his practice of medicine at seventy-four oh one Grandview Avenue. He also operated a drugstore next to his home. Dr. Russell was a leader and instrumental in helping Arvada incorporate. The first proposition was defeated in nineteen oh two, but was finally successful in August twenty-fourth nineteen oh four. And Dr. Russell became Arvada's first mayor, where he served for one year. In nineteen oh seven, Dr. Russell and his wife Estelle moved his practice to the small town of Harris, where there was no doctor. In nineteen ten, he built a brown brick building and opened a drugstore with his residents in the back. It was on the northeast corner of Connecticut Avenue and Walnut Street, which is now Seventy-third Avenue and Bradburn Boulevard. Dr. Russell was well-involved, very involved, in the planning and incorporation of Westminster. And on February twenty-fourth nineteen eleven, Dr. and Mrs. Russell were among forty residents who petitioned the Adams County Court to set an election date for incorporation. The election was held on April fourth nineteen eleven, and Dr. Russell, Richard Russell, was elected the first mayor of Westminster. He served for two years and returned to Arvada, where he served eight terms as their mayor. And I'll have Ms. Graybell finish.
And the next speaker is Linda Graybell. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you all. Okay, so Dr. Russell felt very strongly about parks. I mean, it's interesting tonight, we're talking about parks. So, and this one's only half an acre, folks, okay? It's a little small potatoes. But anyway, he, in nineteen twelve, had three thousand dollars issued to purchase the parcels of land that we know at Seventy-third and Bradburn. And they were purchased over several years, and it was called Russell Park. Early residents gathered on the site for major holidays, picnics, and dances in the open-air pavilion and rode their horses in jibconis. They also had the tradition of the hometown Christmas tree in nineteen twenty-four, where the blue spruce is planted, and we still have that tradition that we carry on today. Dr. Russell died in nineteen thirty-four at the age of sixty-nine. He has the only distinction of being the first doctor and mayor of both Arvada and Westminster. Estelle Graham Russell was ahead of her time in the early nineteen hundreds. She was a religious, cultural, and civic leader at a time when women were expected to walk behind the man. She was proud to be the trailblazer, first lady of two cities. Her involvement and commitment to her church and community is a list too long. Estelle died in nineteen fifty-five at age eighty-seven, and she's buried at Crown Hill Cemetery. In nineteen forty-nine, the volunteer firemen purchased war surplus barracks from Lowry Air Force Base for only seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and moved it to the south side of Seventy-third and Bradburn. Along with the fire engine, it also housed the early library. And later additions included City Hall, the City Hall, and Police Department. All of these structures were demolished in nineteen sixty-eight for the new fire station that opened in sixty-nine. Because of the close association with the first fire station, the park has always been referred to as Fireman's Park by local residents. The last lot to complete the park was donated by Mrs. Estelle Russell in nineteen forty. An article in the Westminster Journal dated June first seventy-seven with the title Westminster Revive details Russell's influence on the beginnings of our early Westminster. The last few lines read, "In her last will and testament, Mrs. Russell stipulated that Westminster could have the property at the southeast corner of the intersection so long as it would be used as a park." The last line reads, "Needless to say, some would like to have at least part of it designated Russell Park." Westminster would not be the city that it is today without the efforts of our first doctor, mayor, and first lady, these two. The reason we bring this up is because there's been new signage posted, and the name Russell Park has been completely eliminated. And we would like to honor our early founders and have that name reinstated. I don't care how it's done, as long as it's weatherproof, you know? And we're just passionate about keeping the history. And now that you know what it stands for, we're all responsible to maintain it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That was our final speaker. Okay, City Managers' Report.
Waiting on some slides. Are they coming? They're up there, but they're not up here. Can you guys see them here? No? Okay, something's wrong with the dais here, but, all right, we'll work off of the slides. So Mayor, Mayor Protem, well, I guess she's not here, but Mayor and councillors this evening, ladies and gentlemen that are in attendance. Couple things to update everybody on, but first of all, we are hosting our very first annual Summer Passport Challenge. It's tied into five different categories across city activities going on throughout the summer. That's nature, wellness, civics, learning, and arts. We encourage folks to go out, collect the stickers as they attend events throughout the months of June, July, and August. There are prizes that will be associated for collecting certain numbers in each category. And we're calling it the Summer Passport Challenge. If you want to learn more about that, go to our city website slash the Westie, and there are details there. It was also in the hard copy this past week that came out. Next slide.
And it is on our monitors now.
Oh, there we go. Okay, good. And so a Westie wins, so medals of honor were given and awarded to two of our police officers. So Sergeant Dave Galbreth and Officer Brandon Zabowski received medals of honor on April seventeenth at Adams County Award Ceremony for an incident that occurred last August. There was an Adams County deputy that had been shot during the ending of a chase in a car, a car chase, and then a crash. Many of our officers did respond, but both Dave and Brandon assisted in finding the suspect and then taking him into custody. And so doing great things, as always, in our WPD. Next slide. Things to know, so Planning Commission tomorrow evening is canceled. Bike-to-work Day is Wednesday, June twenty-sixth. Encourage folks to ride their bikes to work, but we'll have a city event from seven-thirty to nine AM at the Sheridan Underpass, if anybody would like to join us. Environmental Advisory Board Meeting goes Wednesday night, six-thirty to eight PM. It is a hybrid meeting. It is in the Mount Blue Sky Conference Room, which is formerly known as our CMO Conference Room, and it's also on Teams. Our next city council study session is Monday, July first, right here at six-thirty PM. Next slide. No information-only items this evening. And we encourage folks to contact us, reach out with questions, issues, feedback, concerns. You can call the City Manager's Office at three oh three six five eight two thousand six. You can email me directly at the email provided. And as always, you can follow us on Facebook. You can check us out on Instagram. You can visit us on X, and you can ring our bell at Nextdoor. As always, want to be accessible, responsive, transparent, and accountable. If you have any questions, that's all I have this evening.
Any questions? I see no one, so will that mean it's City Council comments? Councillor Azadi?
Thank you, Mayor. Can we have a response to the noise related to the Sustainability Center? Are there any pathways that we have to reduce, you know, maybe a change in the operations or something that can reduce the noise that's related to the public comment?
The councillor and members of the council, you know, there are certainly things that we can explore. What was reported this evening is actually a change from what we started out with for those that visited the Sustainability Center. When we opened back in April, we were collecting on the south side of the facility. Given sheer volume and, you know, presence, they moved that to the east side of the building. It is protected by rather mature pine trees, so difficult to see from across the street. But I can certainly see that that was going to be concerning, and so I made a note. Let's take a look at if there's anything we could do to screen some of that activity from the townhomes across the way. But, you know, wildly popular. These past weekends, they've been absolutely slammed. And so, you know, folks are visiting it. Seems to have been a good transition from the four outstations to the centralized location, but it is very, very busy, and so we owe... location, but it is very, very busy, and so we owe the residents there some better follow-up, and so we'll work on that.
And that leads to my next comment related to communication. You know, I think the Sustainability Center is a great example where we should be communicating a lot more the benefits, and, you know, the fact that it is highly used right now, and it's working really well, I think that and the wards process needs a huge uplift on what's happening with wards, was, you know, the committee timeline, people can't find it on the website, we're not communicating enough what we're doing. We have a process, we just need to communicate it to everyone to let you guys know what's happening. So, the transparency on wards, the center, and even the water plant, right? There's a lot of misinformation going around on the water plant, and the fact that we are not communicating enough the benefit of why we're even doing this investment in the water plant, you know, which is to provide everyone clean water, right, for generations to come. It's very important that we can figure out ways of communicating better. So that's on us, so thanks for those comments. And I had a question on fireworks. Is there anything we can do to, so the fireworks at the dog park, what can we do to reduce that risk?
Well, certainly investigate the report. I'm not aware of the report of the incident, but we need to investigate that, and we'll take appropriate action.
Especially with July 4th coming around, I assume that's going to increase. And then, Squires Park. One more question. So, the dog park, I keep hearing a lot of comments related to why we're doing it there. Can we get staff to maybe give a report on pros and cons? I'd like to know what the pros are, because all I hear are the cons of having that dog park there at Squires Park. Can we get a response right now?
I think the important thing to note is the council's approved the contract for that on June 10th, and so that project's approved and underway, based upon the designs that were offered. We can certainly follow up with some pros, but, you know, again, that contract's been approved by the council.
Yeah, I think it's important, similar to the other things, that we can learn how to communicate the pros, right? Even for that project, just because we approved it doesn't mean we don't have an obligation to communicate to the public why we're doing it, and we keep hearing this increase of complaints once more and more people are finding out about it. So, the theme of my comments, I think, are just linked to the same thing I talk about every week, which is communication, communication, communication. We need to revamp everything we do on communication. I think there's innovative ways of communicating with the public, and we can do that better. Thank you.
Counselor Hart?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank everyone who came and spoke tonight. Heard lots and lots of public comment. Sorry, I'm, it's late, and I'm going to try to organize my thoughts as best as possible. First, I want to say, I don't believe that this dog park is all or nothing when it comes to conservation. Conservation is something that's very important to me. The environment is something that's very important to me. I'm a vegetarian. I've been a vegetarian for a while. I don't eat meat because it's better for the environment. I don't drink milk because it's better for the environment. I not just recycle, I compost. I compost at my house, I composted at my prior house. My prior house in Westminster, I turned the lawn to clover because it uses less water and you don't have to mow. My current backyard is full of water-resistant herbs and plants, and I grow food in my backyard. I don't grow grass in my backyard. So, the environment and conservation is very important to me. More importantly, I'm a mutt, and part of that is Native American, but more important than being native is I grew up in a Native household. I grew up in the culture. I grew up in Menominee culture, that is a tribe from Wisconsin, and that is where my love for the environment started. And so, sorry, I'm just trying to collect my thoughts. That experience afforded me a lot of time on the reservation to go and birdwatch. I got to learn how to ice skate on Lake Michigan. My uncles shoveled off the snow, and all of us cousins that year received ice skates, and we learned how to ice skate on Lake Michigan. During the summer, we used to take the pontoon boat out and look out, look for eagles and other birds and other wildlife that we could see from the lake. This conservation and the environment has been a lifelong passion. So, saying that because I believe that we can take care and honor the land of the dog park and have dogs there at the same time does not negate my passion for the environment because we can do both. And I am one of the councilors that have been out there. I've gone out there more than once. I've gone out there once in the evening where there wasn't very many people, and then I went out there on a Saturday morning when it was the busiest so I could see for myself. And if we shrunk the dog park, it wouldn't take care of the trails that are degraded because those trails that are degraded are within the first couple acres. If you continue going down those trails, you see them narrow and narrow and narrow because not as many people go beyond the loop. Some dogs are elderly, they can't go. Some people can't walk that far. Some people want to take their bike, and it's not safe to have their dogs on a leash, and I've seen people riding their bikes with their dogs behind them. I never once, hiking through there, felt threatened by any of the dogs. In fact, it was actually wonderful seeing all the dogs play. It's really, if you haven't experienced it, you really should go out and experience it. And there is a difference between what my eyes are seeing and what I'm being told because I'm out there and I see the birds, I hear the owls, I see the birds going from, flying from the trees into the grass 15 feet away from the trail that I was on. We stopped so we could enjoy the birds. I have two cockatiels, I love birds. So, for me, I, the issue, so I do a lot of research, and, you know, researching short grass prairies, the two big issues, dogs never came up in my research, by the way. The two big things that came up in my research over and over was overgrazing, and we know cattle's used to graze there, and agriculture, and we know that Westminster used to be farms and orchards. It's in better condition today than when we acquired it, and it is really hard for me to reconcile folks telling me what I'm seeing with my own eyes doesn't exist. I see the wildlife out there. I hear the wildlife out there. That's one of the things that make it wonderful. Also, for the folks who want to bring up the fact that I ran on inclusivity and diversity, another piece of misinformation, 33% of Westminster's open space, that's a third of our city. That's one of the things that makes Westminster wonderful. That's one of the reasons I love being here, is just about anywhere you live, you can walk outside and take a hike. And so, by saying that I'm not being inclusive, if I vote to keep the dog park, to me, doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense when 33% of our land you can walk on, you can hike, you can bike, you can, you know, but the one piece, if I don't, if I don't take away the one piece for the dog park, then I'm not being, I think it's less inclusive to get rid of the dog park. Less inclusive. I feel safe there. I see people of all different backgrounds there. I see a lot of happy dogs. I see a lot of happy wildlife. I see a lot, a lot of grasses, maybe, maybe not short grass prairies, but there's a lot that grows there, a lot of wildflowers. It's there. I've been hiking it. I've been hiking it. I'm not going to, I'm not going to believe, I'm seeing it with my own eyes. We can take care of that land. We can conserve that land. Also, most of the dogs are not peeing on the prairie. They're peeing on the trail. They're not, most dogs aren't veering very far off the trail, if at all. Most dogs aren't even going off the trail. And so, again, this is what I've seen with my own eyes. So, this is my truth because this is what I've seen personally, and my truth is that I've been passionate about the environment. I wrote letters to President Clinton when I was in grade school about the environment. Like, it's been my whole life. So, I don't appreciate being attacked on my passion for the environment. I don't appreciate being attacked on inclusivity and diversity. This is part of inclusivity, and it's not one or the other. We can do both. And, let's see. Oh, and I did get to feel the mental health benefits that you all talk about. I was having a really rough day on, the first day I went on Wednesday. I was having a really rough day, and I came home feeling so much better. So I've definitely, and my dog experiences the mental health benefits as well. And something else I'd like to bring up is, you know, the guardians have done a really good job letting people know to pick up after themselves because when I walked the trails, they were pristine. I didn't come across a single, I didn't come across any dog feces at all, so people have been picking up. The only place I've seen where people haven't picked up is near the entrance, but we've got one of our dog park warriors over there that I've seen out there, picking up the droppings that other people, you know, weren't kind enough to pick up after their dogs. So, we've rezoned parks to open space, we've rezoned open space to parks, we have overwhelmingly way more rezoned parks to open space. And so, this is not getting rid of, you know, keeping something the same is not giving it away, we're not giving anything away. And by wanting to keep at the dog park doesn't mean we don't want to work on conservation, doesn't mean we don't want to get rid of the noxious weeds. Actually, I'm really concerned, learning tonight, that we actually use pesticides and herbicides. I don't use that in my yard for the bees. Why are we doing that as a city? So, thank you. Thank you for coming again. Thank you for sharing your dog park. I've really, really enjoyed being out there and hiking, and I should, I should send the council pictures. Bill's been taking beautiful, beautiful pictures showing how gorgeous the space is. I love that space. A lot of people love that space, and I think that we can take care of the land, I think we can be good stewards of the land and have our dog park. Thank you.
Counselor Ireland?
Well, there's things that have been said that I agree with, and I appreciate all of you coming again. People from the dog park, the gentleman about wards, I want this to be a transparent thing that we're doing. I encourage any of you that have questions about the wards to send them off to us. I will, I plan on going to the Advisory Committee meetings to make sure that it's a transparent process. That's what I want in our city, is transparency. I talk about it all the time. I am concerned about what has transpired with our parks and wrecks and libraries department, with the NRO not having an independent study. If that's true, heads should roll, and I'm afraid it is true because a lot of things are like that in our city, and that is why I ran for office, just so you know. The water treatment plant is too expensive. It is going to break this city. As much as they tell you how wonderful it is, it's only 11.7 million gallons a day, and I've done the numbers with interest, we're up to $462 million, and that's not even upgrading Simper, which is 45 million gallons a day, and we need Simper. We can't afford two more phases of this new water treatment plant. And it was on the most prime property, there was three other choices they could have made. They picked the most expensive piece of land, so don't let anyone tell you differently because that's how it went. That's why I was a water warrior because they are breaking us with these water rates. And there are some people in this city that want higher water rates, let me tell you, because they have all other ideas of what to do with that water. Think about the 90,000 apartments they want to build. Where are they going to get the water? Just let you know that I am watching what is going on, and I might vote the only one for you, but I will keep doing it. That's all I have to say.
Counselor Demont?
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Real quick for the City Manager, I would like to follow up on the comments around the report. I'm not really sure how those go, if that's factual, but I think it would be worth us hearing feedback on that. I'm glad also that you're going to follow up on the Sustainability Center because that was in my notes. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. So this is going to be our last meeting before Independence Day, and what better way to celebrate that by sitting through public comment, being able to use your First Amendment rights. That certainly is one of the most important things that this country affords us. So, I have a couple things that I wanted to share since we didn't get post-meeting. One, this last week, if you didn't know, every third Thursday I do my policy in Pilsner. We do that at 6:30 at CoCoPeli. I look forward to that next month. We had a full house, and it was a lot of fun, a lot of new faces, a couple old faces, but it was a good time. You know, the mayor wishes she was there, but she was off, learning at CML to bring back good nuggets for us all. The next thing that I wanted to share is the mayor, Counselor Ireland and I participated at the Safety Center Open House with the Police Department and Fire Department. That was a good time, super warm, a lot nicer weather than we've had in years past, but it was a good opportunity to come in here from our police and fire, as well as some utility and parks. We had a lot of different departments there, but primarily our police and fire, and so we appreciate them being out and enjoying our community. Got to see people coming down the tower. They asked me if I wanted to do that. I'm pretty sure they were joking because I don't think the City Manager would care to see me try to do that, so. But thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate all your feedback, and we look forward to getting through the rest of our meeting.
Counselor Camelia?
Oh, thank you so much, and thank you for everyone for your public comment, your enthusiastic participation. It means a lot to us, it really does. I do want to start with, I just want to dispel, I've heard this a few times from residents and also from councilors, I really want to dispel the idea that anyone from anywhere has an agenda. That has really been sticking to me, and I've been holding back from saying something, but I truly believe that our staff works hard, and I do believe that they're here because they're passionate about what they do. I truly believe that they are doing their job when they came up with this report to try to figure out, you know, what can we do to protect and preserve our land in the best way possible? And whatever we do with the information, I don't believe that anyone here, I trust our city, I trust our staff, I don't believe anyone came here with a preconceived agenda. So, I really hope we can learn to set that aside and try to work together a little better so that we are hearing each other without those barriers between us. And I also don't believe any of our residents have agendas. I believe that we are all very passionate, and we're coming from different areas, and I think that it's okay to disagree. In fact, that's a good thing because that means we have the right stakeholders at the table. That means we're hearing all the voices we need to hear, and we're getting the information that we need to make the right decision. And so, I just hope that we can put aside that kind of talk in the future. The accusatory tone, it doesn't help us get anywhere, and so I just want to say, I appreciate you, I appreciate our staff, and I am really proud of what we do, and I think we're trying to do it for the right to do it for the right reasons. And we're trying to hear you, and we have heard, uh, the public for the last six months. And so, thank you for that, and thank you for staying engaged and, and continuing to participate. So, um, I'm hoping we can leave that aside in the future. I also wanna clarify a few points, um, just for those advocating here, the folks that are left here, I know that you really care a lot. So, um, I just wanna say, for those advocating to keep the dog park as is, just remember, there's not a dog park currently. So, uh, if we want to keep it as is, that would mean, you know, we keep it as open space, right? So, the decision in front of council is to clarify what size of the, of that area, of that open space should be rezoned to become a dog park. And I wanna clarify that, just so that any folks that might not be paying attention, um, know that this would be rezoned, so that would no longer be open space. So, just making that clear. And that's okay, if that's the decision we wanna take, we're all coming together on what size that should be, if it should be all hundred, four, four hundred and seventy acres, um, or if it should be a different size. But the idea is, it is open space now. Do we want it to be open space later, right? So, we're going to be rezoning it. That's the decision before council. So, I think we should keep that, uh, in mind. And, um, I'll also speak up on the, the visual aspect. I've, I heard several times throughout the night, you know, we said, oh, from what I can see, the, you know, this, there's grass there. I wanna speak on that, because that's, that's not how grasses work. So, I feel like that might become my new slogan. That's not how grass works. So, grasses are individuals, right? They're, they're not, it's not a field. They're all individuals. And our native grasses, it's not about what you can see above the surface. Our native grasses are several feet deep. And that's why we wanna keep them there, because they are very delicate, and when they come through disturbance, then they easily erode. And then that allows non-native grasses to come in, and those are only a few inches deep, and that helps cause erosion, and that's part of the problem that we're trying to protect from. Now, it's up to us to decide whether we care about that or not. I get it. Um, but I just wanna say that the real problems, especially in Colorado, where we've got desert land, is about what's happening below the surface. And, you know, do we wanna protect and preserve our stable soils, and protect and preserve our water cycle, and ensure that water stays in our current ecosystem? Because that's where it's trapped, is within those roots. And we're losing that when we have non-natives take place. So, that's a little bit more of the conversation. And to all of those points I'm making, I really encourage anyone who hasn't, go back to that June third study session, read the materials. There's a lot of information in there from all sides of the discussion. I feel that all the information we need is included in that agenda packet, because it has a very thorough environmental report, which I am curious if it's possible, um, what we just spoke about with the ERO. I wanna find out if that's possible, that it could have been changed. But we will follow up there. But either way, the information is still pertinent in the fact that there's an environmental report that talks about why the grasses are important and why the species are important. And then there's also, uh, the Guardians worked really hard on putting their heads together and creating, uh, a map of trails that they suggest that we use, which I think are excellent, um, of waste bins, of gates, of all sorts of suggestions. And so, I really think that the information that we all want, which is to create a good solution for everyone, is all included in that. And so, if you are concerned that you haven't seen the right solution for what you're looking for, I suggest you take a look at that study session, go back through the packets. I think all the information is there. I think we have what we need to really commit to creating a good plan that works for everyone. Um, and I do wanna say, you know, the, I've only heard once, uh, and that's from Ms. Cindy Stout, who speaks almost every night, uh, for a suggestion of trying to do both things, you know? Can we keep it as open space and keep it as an off-leash, um, area for dogs? That's the only time I've heard that suggestion, and I do wonder if that's a suggestion. I want, I'll put that to our city. I don't know if that's an option. And so, I wanna say that clearly, that I don't know if we can do that, because I don't know if our city has the resources it takes to do that. Uh, because, again, that's not how grass works, right? Once it's disturbed, it takes about ten years to fully restore it, and that was the plan. Our open space, uh, folks were trying to restore the land. They were trying to put the investment in it to properly grow it, right? Properly protect our natives. And so, I don't know if we can afford to do that, because it's a little bit like throwing money out the door when you're trying to protect it and allow off-leash dogs, right? So, I don't know if that's an option. I don't know if we can afford it, or if it's even plausible. And I've also, um, heard and talked about rotating, right? The space of land, and that also doesn't work for the same reasons, right? Because it takes ten years. We're just throwing money out the door at that point. That's not how grass works. Once you disturb it, you can't just rotate. That's, um, not how it works. And again, with the rezoning, right? Once we do it, it would take too long. It would be like, I don't even know if I would be a proponent of that, because it'd be throwing money away. There's no point. Um, I do wanna know how much a survey would cost if we did one more, if we can follow up, if we did a survey of the whole city? Because I don't know how we would get a better outreach, but the thing that's interesting is, is we have, the folks who are showing up are dog owners, which is fantastic, because we need their voices. And the folks I've heard say, oh, I don't have, you know, a dog in the, in the fight. Uh, well, you do, right? Because this is your land. This is your Westminster open space. And we've, I've heard again and again, even just tonight, that we are the most proud of our open space. And I don't know if folks know that we're, we're rezoning it. So, I don't know the folks that don't, aren't dog owners, if they realize that what we're doing is changing the acreage, right? And again, nearly five hundred acres, um, I think it would be the largest possibly in the U, I, US, is from what I've heard. I haven't found anything bigger, that's for sure. Half of that size would be bigger than every other dog park in Colorado. Just know that. And so, the size is significant in that when we say we value our open space as number one priority, then are we doing, are we even keeping to what it is that you want when we do this? I wanna make sure we're getting what you want out of this too, that you really understand what it is we're doing. Um, because land is not growing, and as we know, we've got less than two, I think it's two point eight percent left to develop, and, uh, Westminster is landlocked, right? Unlike Thornton, who's got room to grow, and unlike Arvada and all the places to the west, we're landlocked. We're not growing land. We were gifted this to protect and preserve. We're not getting any more. So, we need to be careful about what we do with the land we have. And if we choose to make it, uh, rezone it as an off-leash dog park, that's okay too. We just need to make that choice consciously, and ensure that we understand what it is that we're doing. Uh, and then we need to really make sure we protect it right, right? Because then it's gonna be a destination area. Like, that's been mentioned, that we want to possibly reduce the number of folks who are coming. I think at that point, it will be a destination area, and the use will increase, because then we're really labeling it, and it will be online as a dog park. So, we need to be careful about that thought, too. Um, thank you. All of that said, I do have an actual report here somewhere. That I just lost. Where did it go? Well, anyway, I'll say that, um, as far as my counselor's report, I did go to CML this past week, which was really fantastic, and I wanted to talk about the fact that we did some, uh, really great activities, especially around, um, emergency responses. And there was a practice that we did, a work session that we did around, uh, what we would do in case our city had a disaster, which, considering we went through Marshall Fire, I feel like we're more prepared in Westminster than probably most cities. But I was wondering if we ever do, you know, a, a practice dry run with our fire and our police departments? Is that something we do?
Yes, it's something we do.
Fantastic. Okay. I figured. I just, I was interested in getting that going, if not. And then, uh, we had a lot of other conferences around, um, cybersecurity, and of course, um, AI and sustainability. There was a really, there was a really great discussion, um, in many different panels. Um, and that brings me to, I, uh, have a request of my council fellows that I would usually do, uh, in pre-meeting, but I did not go to CNL this year, and an AI conference popped up, uh, for government folks and leadership folks, and we get a discount if you're on government. And so, um, there's an AI conference in Vegas that I'll share some information about. If, you know what, I'll do it that way. And I'm hoping to get approval to go to this instead of that CNL conference that I did not go to earlier in the year. And so, um, this would just be to give a little bit more color. And so, one way, I was at CML. I was asked to possibly do a panel on IT departments for cities and cybersecurity and AI. Um, I'm not sure. I haven't decided on whether I can conduct that next year, but I can say that this would definitely help. So, I guess this is just my request on, and discussion on whether, uh, we can make this happen. It's in August.
I'll just share, you're allowed two trips out of state, and it's what you choose to do.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, all right. I think that's every, well, okay. I'm sorry. There's just so much to go through. Um, the Sustainable Center, I think we already hit on that. I think we're gonna be following up to see whether or not we can make sure that nothing is happening in the front area of that. I know that you're working on it. And then the Squires Park, uh, I was just wondering how we decided what the design would look like, and if we could communicate that out to our community? You know, how did we come to our decision on whether a park would, a dog park would be included?
We could certainly follow up. Absolutely.
Yeah, that would be great. Uh, and then, again, I do wanna echo Counselor Azadi's comments. I agree about our, our communication. I really would, I think I've said this before in a few different meetings, but I'd like to formally ask, on all of our big issues, we're hot topics, you know, where we get more than a hundred emails, can we have a webpage dedicated to information about it? You know, let's say the wards? Can we, this is a hot topic this year. We're gonna get a lot of questions. Can we have an FAQ page that just answers all the community's questions? And then, I think that that would be relevant for all, I would say we've probably got five top issues, right? If we could make a, I don't know if we wanna get approval from council, but I feel like that would be really pertinent to just have a page for, and we can just have a site on part of our website that says, here's top issues affecting Westminster 2024, you know, something like that. Then they can go there, and I think it might be really helpful.
Fantastic. Being the last one to talk, I, it is ten forty-nine, and we still have a meeting to run. Um, I will report out next week about my CML experience. The entire four days was about civility. Um, there were threads in every single thing we did about civility, and, um, it was fantastic. So, anyway, let's get on to the consent, or, council, let's see. Sorry. Are you ready to go to the agenda? Um, let's go to the consent agenda. Um, Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Consent Agenda Items Eight A through Eight D.
Uh, do I have a second? Counselor Ireland?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Consent Agenda Items Eight A through D. Um, roll call, please.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Haat?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote.
That brings us to Counselors Bill Number Twenty. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number Twenty on first reading, authorizing the city manager to execute an economic development agreement with Trisolus Life Sciences that authorizes a hundred percent rebate of permit and review fees, use taxes on construction materials, and the sales and use taxes on upfront expenditures on furniture, fixtures, and equipment based on revenue generated in the amount not to exceed forty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars for the business expansion and redevelopment of the building located at sixty-two seventy-two West Ninety-first Avenue, commonly known as the headquarters of Trisolus Life Sciences.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Carmelia, thank you. Um, is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Haat?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
And Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote.
That brings us to renaming a firefighter's park, and it says to hold a discussion. I am going to propose a motion, so we have something to discuss. So, I move that City Council approve a new park sign to read Russell Park Honoring Firefighters, and it be placed at Seventy-third and Bradburn.
Second.
Discussion?
And Mayor, do you mind repeating that name one more time?
Russell Park. So, I, I see it as Russell Park Honoring Firefighters, so that we have everybody included. But the richness of what we heard tonight, and what I've known through the Westminster Historical Society with the Russells, just brings a whole new dynamic to what that park was used for when they were here, with dancing and gathering, and, and we still have the, um, Hometown Christmas, um, with the tree that was planted. Um, I think the custom flag, um, building is where they had one of their buildings. I, I just think it brings a new richness to that area and a new story that our citizens need to hear. And the reason why I, I just feel, we're the final ones to discuss and, and to choose this. It would have to come back to us anyway. I believe that we have heard what, what we would present. Um, when I went through this for another park, um, that's down in that area, it took over a year. I don't wanna see a year go by. In my heart of hearts, we need to preserve history, and we're the ones to do that. And so, that's the reason for my motion, to just get this sign ordered and up, and, and let's celebrate it. And I would hope it's there by the time we do, um, uh, our Hometown Christmas. So, anyway, um, Counselor Carmelia?
Thank you. I agree. Uh, well, it's already been seconded, so yes. Um, Counselor Azadi?
Yeah, I just wanna say that I completely agree with this. I think we'll never be able to build a future if we don't know where we've been, and it's important. I love how balanced, it, it's a great concept of having both in there. I, I just had a question for, uh, Tomas, maybe, can, can you give us a sixty-second of the naming process? So, so from a process standpoint, when are we gonna get the, you know? So, I know it's getting developed right now, and it's almost final. Does that include council input in this way? And so, what's the process looking like?
Uh, I think that the process starts with someone coming to the ta, table and saying, hey, this is a name that we'd like to be considered. Uh, we've, we've developed a process where we identify and look at these individuals and make sure that they are, have a good history. We know that, uh, Dr. Russell certainly does. Um, and so, I think we could certainly expedite this and, um, meet the mayor's schedule no problem.
So, just so the public knows, this is kosher, you know? We, council can bring, uh, suggestion like this, like anyone else can. And it's part of the new process that Parks and Rec is working on for naming our parks and so forth, so just wanted to say that.
Yeah, so we'll take it to, um, probably the Parks and Rec Board, just to have them look at the proposal, and then we'll bring it back to council for their review as well.
Counselor Haat?
Um, yes, I'm in complete agreement with you, Mayor.
Um, Counselor Demont?
Um, sorry to make you come back, but I, I thought you guys paused your process. I mean, and just correct me if I'm wrong, before the process, council just decided what it was.
Um, the council still has the last word on any naming, so the, the pause was simply to add to the, um, Parks and Rec developed a policy for Parks and, um, open space sites and trails. We were not, uh, we, we didn't include city facilities, and so, we were asked to work with other departments to incorporate that as well. So, that's, we've got a wonderful process for this particular application. We can work it, uh, in an expeditionist manner and bring it back to council for your review and decision.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that reminder. I was here when they made that, and, uh, I'm disappointed we still haven't seen the one at Sheridan Green. we still haven't seen the one at Sheridan Green, I do fully support this one, but I think that that history is important also, because I was here when they decided to do that, after we had kind of a, a big group of different parks that were asked to be renamed, so we wanted to make sure we did have an inclusive process, so I appreciate you educating the public on that. But, the last thing I would say is I appreciate the Historical Society coming to educate us on this, I too think that our history is very, very important, and I think that Counselor Azadi said it well, that we have to know where we came from, so I fully support what the mayor's asking.
City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, just for clarification, if I could, and the attorney may want to speak to this, but I, what I just heard you say was, you want to unilaterally, based upon your vote tonight, rename this park, but then I just heard a conversation about running this through the city's park naming process, which includes Parks, Rec, Open Space, Libraries, Advisory Board, it includes the Inclusivity Board, et cetera, and so, is the council making a unilateral decision to name it, Russell Park in Honor of Firefighters? Done, let's not mess around with the process, or are we saying the council wants to be the one submitting this as a name for a potential renaming of a park, run it through the process and bring it back to the council? I'm just looking for clarification.
For me, it was to get this signage done, had we been, had any communication about even changing from Fireman's Park to Firefighter, we would have had this discussion, I would have brought it up then, but instead, I won't go through all of the pieces that happened during the time that the renaming, and we didn't know about the renaming, I got emails and telling them it wasn't renamed, and it was a disaster, so for me, yeah, I'm saying we have the proof, it's right here given to us tonight, if, I'm okay if they want to take it to Parks and Rec and Inclusivity Board, but it's going to be a tight turnaround, because, because it didn't need, we didn't need to have a sign put up that is no longer possibly good, because it doesn't have the right name on it, and so, Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, that, that was my question, really, the process to follow here, because the city council does have the final authority to name and rename a park, obviously it will be a city council decision. The question is, though, this 2021 policy that was put forward does contemplate a process where the name gets vetted through Parks, Rec, and Library Open Space, excuse me, the Board and-
And I get it, but it, but it, that process didn't happen for firefighter to fireman, or fireman to firefighter, so, so that, that is what has me a bit riled, and, and we didn't know about that change, or we could have had this conversation and not ordered a wrong sign, and, and it does lay with us, and I didn't know that the process had been reiterated, because as far as we had been told, it was on hold, so that is the thinking I went into, so when I got this today that said, hold a discussion to determine, I'm going, I know the last one took over a year, that's not going to happen this time, we need a signage there that's correct, and that the people know what the history is, so, Counselor Carmelia?
If I may, seeing as the final decision rests with us, and we could waste time going through that, or we could stick with the decision that's going to be the same no matter what, do we think we could have a top-down for this evening, and just, this will be the final say?
I think so. For me, I just want to say that the, the taxpayers paid 10 grand for a sign they didn't want, and now we're going to be paying 20 grand, because our staff goes above and beyond telling the city council what they should know, and so, I'm upset about that, but I'm still going to vote for this, because it should have been done right the first time, and that's all I have to say about it.
Counselor Azadi?
Tomas, can you answer the question on if, was, did it go through the Board for the change that currently exists or, or not, and then subsequently, would it be okay with you if, since the final naming process isn't finalized, correct, that we do it one time, top-down, right now, to Counselor Carmelia's point?
Sure, now, the, the changing of the name from fireman to firefighters was an internal process that we, I worked with the city manager and made sure that they were in agreement with that, so we did not go through the, the process that I've outlined for you, but again, whatever the council's will is in this regard, we are happy to do that, I am going to point out that refurbishing the sign to change the, the name is not $10,000, that's for a brand-new one from scratch, refurbishing it's around $2,400, I believe.
Okay, thank you, so it sounds like, and sorry, one, one more question, when is the new naming process going to be done and ready, so we can?
The park renaming, part of the process is, for all intents and purposes, done, it has been presented to the ProSLAB Board, they were in favor of it, the part where, the part where it's expanded to other city facilities, I do not know when that part will be ready, but certainly the parks part is ready to go.
And it does contemplate this top-down, since if we are the requesters in the first step, and we're the last step also, after the Board, there's no risk of, so, what I'm trying to get to is, is, is there a risk in any kind of top-down right now, besides setting a precedent?
Well, it's, it's not contemplated in the process, but I think the city ma, city attorney has stated that this would be perfectly acceptable, so.
Okay.
Counselor Demont?
I'll call the question as-is to make the change tonight, please.
Roll call, please. Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Haat?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
And Counselor Demont?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote. And that brings us to item 11A, Counselors Bill Number 17. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, wait, wait, city clerk needs me. No, okay.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 17 on second reading to mend the lease agreement between City of Westminster and Community Reach Center for the use of the former library building located at 3031 West 76th Avenue.
Counselor Haat?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill Number 17, is there any further discussion? Counselor Ireland?
I just want to, last time we voted on this, I said that the, they had, this organization had $32 million in assets, they actually have $46 million in assets, their CEO, CEO is making about a half a million a year, so I will be voting no on this.
Roll call, please. Counselor Haat?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 5-1 vote. That brings us to Counselors Bill Number 18, Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor, I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 18 on second reading to establish a temporary lease agreement between the City of Westminster and Community Reach Center for the use of the Harris Park Professional Building located at 3621 West 73rd Avenue in association with a replacement municipal court project.
Counselor Haat? Second?
Sorry, second.
Sorry. It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill Number 18, is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Carmelia? Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
And Counselor Haat?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 5-1 vote. And City Attorney, do we have reason for executive session?
We do, Mayor, following the post-meeting presentations, there are two executive sessions proposed for City Council, the first is to discuss strategy and progress on a proposed lease for the city-owned property at 31, excuse me, 3915 West 73rd Avenue, and to provide instructions to the city's negotiators pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute 2464024E1 and Westminster Municipal Code 1113C4 and 7. The second, if you would entertain a motion on both of them, I suppose, the second executive session that is proposed is for the discussion of a personnel matter, goal settings specific to the city manager pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code Section 1113C1 and Colorado Revised Statute 2464024F1.
I will poll the council that state your name and that you're willing to go into these two executive sessions.
Obie's adding, yes?
Clerk Carmelia, yes.
Dave Demont, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Amber Haat, yes.
Christine Ireland, yes.
Okay, it is 11:07, and we will go into our presentation first in our post-meeting. Right, Brian, Brian?
Ryan and Brian came after me, I think.
Right, after you, yeah.
Yeah, correct.
Yes, we are, Mayor.
Yes.
Obie, do you want to say?
Yes.
Could we cut, could we?
I do.
See if we're on the sidebars?
We're-
Mayor's got the floor.
We're in our post-meeting presentation?
Yes. So, Mayor, we've got a, a presentation on the memorandum of understanding with the Westminster Community Foundation, formerly known as the Westminster Legacy Foundation, so I'll pitch it over to Parks, Rec, and Library Director, Mr. Herrera Michler, who is our city representative to that foundation board, so, Tomas, you-
Thank you very much, Mayor and Counselors, I'm very pleased to be here tonight, I'm joined by Mike Lazar, who is the Board Chair, and with Natalie Martinez, who is the Executive Director of the Foundation, and over the last two and a half years, I've seen the Foundation go from zero, which is where it was at when I started, to really, it's really starting to hit on all cylinders, and I'm not going to steal any of their thunder, because they've got a really great, very brief presentation for you.
All right, thank you, everybody, I think I know most of you all here, but my name is Mike Lazar, I've been involved in the Westminster Business Community for most of the past 15 years, mostly through the Westminster Chamber of Commerce, my latest endeavor is I've gotten involved with the Westminster Community Foundation about a year ago, became a board member, it was known as the Westminster Legacy Foundation then, and we have since gone through quite a bit of a transformation during the time that I've, I've been there, as Tomas has mentioned, I think we've had almost complete turnover of the Board, I'm now the fourth-longest-tenured Board Member on there, so we have new energy, we have a brand-new direction, we're excited to share it with you as part of our ask tonight in terms of considering this amended memorandum of understanding that we have presented before you guys, and so, my role tonight is just to give you kind of the 30,000-foot overview of what we're looking to do as an organization now, and then Natalie's going to talk about what we are doing and what we have accomplished so far during this time period. So, the memorandum of, of, of understanding, very briefly, asks for a temporary increase in funding from the city to assist with paying for the major piece of overhead that we have, and that is for our Executive Director, and what this is going to enable us to do is it's going to enable us to pursue our major strategic objective, which is creating a sustainable giving program within the City of Westminster, so what does that mean? That means we're looking to create the philanthropic donor network from scratch, basically, within the City of Westminster, and that includes not just big businesses, but also includes individuals. So, when I say that we have, you know, rebranded ourselves and gone through this rebranding effort- and gone through this rebranding effort and changing our name from the Westminster Legacy Foundation to the Westminster Community Foundation, that's not just some superficial change. I mean, this is something that's going right down to our core in terms of the organization now having truly ambitious designs and plans for creating something that's going to last and be durable within this community. I mean, the city of Westminster has grown tremendously, especially over the past few decades. It's now at a point where it's ready to have an organization like this. This is one of the last pieces that can fall into place in terms of really finding the community together and creating, you know, collaborative networks in and amongst the, you know, various interests that are at stake here in the community. And in particular, you know, why us, you know, why would you trust us? I would say that, you know, with the board, you know, the board members are now, you know, truly prepared to make, you know, personal contributions, sacrifices, drawing upon their networks, you know, their personal connections to launch this thing and make it go. I mean, I'm drawing on not just my resources, I'm asking my firm to contribute. I'm asking my clients to contribute. I'm a practicing attorney. I'm all in on this thing. It is time to make something like this run. And so that's what we're looking to do. This new memorandum of understanding will help us get there. And I'll turn this over to Ms. Martinez to talk about what we've been up to.
So one of the biggest things, and I left everybody a golf shirt and our new brochure and our golf flyer. We've been up to rebranding and really getting a solid message out there as to why we're the Westminster Community Foundation. Like Mike said, we're here to dig in, to be the cornerstone of charitable giving, to teach philanthropy, to advance philanthropy and good works in Westminster, inspiring positive change. That is our mission. Our mission is short, sweet and easily memorable. What do we want to do? We want to make sure we're supporting a thriving Westminster community for all, for generations to come. So those are the highlights. The rebranding has been a major effort. If you guys take a look at our new website, it's beautiful, it's fresh, it's bright. I've actually had a few compliments on it, so that's pretty exciting. What we've been up to, so besides the rebranding, quarter one, we worked with Park, Rexon Library to do in-depth community engagement with communities of color, those that are monolingual speaking, whether it was Spanish, Hmong or any of the other languages, to engage and do that on a personal level, to do it through focus groups versus surveys, to really work with community navigators into the community and draw some rich data and feedback for Tomas's visioning plan process. So he can tell you about that, show you the results. I sent in a very detailed report on that. The other thing that we have done is we have grown our team a little bit, not with full-time benefit staff, but I have two interns, one who's here today, Katie D'Nezza, and we have another one, Annika Obrecht, who was with us last year. And we have somebody who helps with our big finance, financial and administrative tasks, like changing the name is very, very time-intensive to do IRS, Department of Revenue. So we have expanded our team. It's really helped. It's allowed me to focus on different pieces and really dive into the Sustainable Giving Program. We're, you know, the $1,000 a year plus folks are going to be called the Legacy Trust. If you would like to do something at $20 a month, ongoing, it's the Good Works Club. So we have something for everybody. We are not just going to be exclusive in, you know, developing things within the Sustainable Giving Program. So, you know, this is why we exist. We exist to, you know, foster a sense of belonging and inclusion in our city to make sure people understand that we really do want to have good works that come out of us and that we want to teach and pull out philanthropy in whichever way we can. So that is part of that. I do, I think Mike's going to touch on this, but the strategic goals of the city, two of them are advancing a thriving community, which is one of our priorities. And that encompasses anything from food security to working with the unhoused, to parks and making our city beautiful, arts and humanities, anything around that. So we just want to let you know that we are looking at the strategic goals of the city and we have paid attention. With that said, one of the most exciting things that's happened in the last week and a half is the end of April, I approached Almost Home to do a collaboration. Almost Home helps people who are housing insecure or unsheltered homeless. And we partnered on a grant. We took the lead, the community foundation took the lead, and we were able to get a 357, 357, 357,000, how come I can't say this?
100,000.
800,000, so 357000. Grant for two years, for 2024 and 2025, to rapidly rehouse 18 to 24-year-olds, people in Westminster, Westminster specifically, who are unhoused, experiencing homelessness, unsheltered, unhoused, living in cars, whatever that is. So they've come with all the infrastructure and all the operations. We came with the funding acumen. So this is pretty exciting because it is two years, it's over two years. So we'll work with Tomas's team, we'll work with other people to make sure we meet that, those 15. So that is a really big deal. We also got a grant from Adams County Government to do capacity building around honing and ensuring our strategic direction for our Sustainable Giving Program and other endeavors is on track. Dr. Violetta Garcia is amazing. She is a fantastic coach. So we were able to get that grant. Half of it pays for her consultancy to the county. The other half comes to us to use as we see fit. We will probably be doing a half-day session with the board to make sure that we're all strategically aligned for the next 24 months. I will say it has taken me about 24 months to get up to speed and make sure everything is going. And I think, I think it's worked. I mean, I think learning and listening and going to as many community events as possible and getting my name out there. And you guys can see our new brochure, it's beautiful. We'll make sure we get more out. We've been going to community events, getting our name out there, new banner, new stuff. So we were at the block party, saw Amber and Mayor McNally. So yeah, it's a pretty exciting, it's exciting to be in this position. It's exciting for our future. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike now.
All right, so you all should have a copy of the amended MOU in front of you. The key changes are right there on this slide. We're not changing that much. Really, it's a proposed change of the contributions from the city, increasing it from 60 to 75% of Ms. Martinez's total compensation package for this year. And that would scale to 50% in 2025, 25% in 2026, and then that's it. I want to be very clear on the "that's it" portion of this. I mean, look, like, it's up to you guys in terms of how you want to partner with us. We'll certainly take what we can get. But it's not my intention to come back here ever again and have this kind of conversation about this kind of MOU. I mean, I want this to be a self-sustaining organization. That is why we are doing the Sustainable Giving Drive. We are looking to build up our general fund to the point where we are on our own in terms of being able to fund our own operations. That said, I'm certainly not suggesting that I cut the city out of this. I want to partner with you all. I want the foundation to be great partners with the city forever, as much as possible. There will always be projects to collaborate on, but I don't want us to just look like a charity case for funding our overhead.
You might want to mention the grant program that we're offering.
Oh, that's the other thing. I will go ahead and do that. We are, we reinvented a little bit our community giving program, which is formerly known as the Small Grants Program. So we will be awarding $12, $5,000 grants this year at our October Community Giving Celebration. So that's pretty exciting to get that back down. We have been sending press releases. We sent one out for our name change. Biz West News picked it up, I think, Obie, did you see it there? And we sent another press release out today announcing the community giving program. It will open for applications to start coming in July 15th. So if you know anybody, it does not have to be a nonprofit. They do need a fiscal agent or somebody who can, so if they're a community-led group or a community-led initiative, they do either need a fiscal agent or somebody who can administer the funds for them. One other quick, good piece of news, we got our first donor-advised fund, which is significant. So it goes into our investment account and grows until that person decides how they want to spend that money. So that's pretty exciting. So obviously, here's your option slide. And I guess we'll take questions.
Questions, comments, Counselor Chameleon?
Yes, how do you decide which organizations get the $5,000?
There'll be a committee that'll help us decide that.
Okay.
So one of our board members is heading up that charge. We will be, I think Mike and myself will be talking with her to figure out how best to find committee members. So it's an equitable, it's an equitable process.
So we need to find the board, and then is this an annual, ongoing?
Yes.
So.
Yes, so let me correct that just a little bit. So there is a committee right now that's been tasked with creating the application process, which I believe is created now.
And then, and follow.
And then they'll be accepting all the different applications. They'll be processing the applications and making recommendations to the board. And so the board will be deciding who the grant recipients ultimately are.
Thank you.
Counselor Hop?
Yeah, so I'm looking at the different options. And I see present another option, is there? I guess I would just like to hear a little bit more about what, how else it could look like if we were to increase and expand the MOU.
What else it could look like?
Yeah.
Well, there are a number of different options there.
Well, I know, but beyond, because I see increased support over a longer period of time with like a fixed amount is like one of them. So that's, that's one way that we can, basically, I want to make sure, I don't want to pull out too soon because I want to make sure this, this is sustainable on its own. I want to make sure that we support it properly. And so is there another option to increase and expand the MOU that's not on the board?
Sure. So what this proposal actually is, and what the MOU is, is this is a, effectively, a subsidy of our general fund. And the Sustainable Giving Program, like the whole purpose is to build up our general fund reserves from which we pay for our operational expenses, such as the executive director. And then also, we have funds that we could use and award to people, you know, to grants and, you know, give to other charitable causes, you know, in executing our philanthropic mission. So if you wanted to look at something as an alternative, an alternative structure, it could just be a direct donation to the general fund. However, you know, the way that these funds are tagged is that they're used exclusively for paying for our executive director. And operations. So I would suggest that if you want to look at alternative arrangements, you would look at, you know, removing some of the strings that are attached to the funds that are there. Or you can look at, you know, funding other specific causes. I mean, there's a lot of different possibilities.
Okay. I just wanted to be real clear because it said present other options, what those, what that looked like. But I definitely want to make sure that we are providing the proper support to make sure this can sustain itself at some point.
I mean, obviously, the possibilities are endless. You know, you could pick 50% for 10 years. You could pick, I'm just throwing that out there as an option, or anything like that. You know, you can extend it. It's, or, you know, they're, like Mike said.
I'm not going to say no, Counselor.
Well, I guess, what would be the best option to make sure that? Because if we don't provide you enough support, it's not going to work. And so I just, what, what, what does, what does that look like? I guess, in your vision to make sure, or what, what does it look like that you need to make sure that this stands alone at some point?
Correct.
Yes.
So in running public-private partnerships for about 37 years, when I started this job, I proposed this tapering of city support for operations of the foundation, which is kind of counterintuitive, right? A guy coming from the nonprofit sector saying, hey, give less. But I do think that what the foundation needs is a deadline. To go to our donors or potential donors and say, we need you. We need you to step up and be part of supporting the vision and mission of this organization. That's why we went through this whole process of kind of redefining and telling our story more effectively. What I would propose is that the council consider this slight addition to the MOU, but keep that three-year deadline for now. Have us come back on a regular basis and report back to how we're doing. And if adjustments are needed, then that can be addressed at that point.
I guess, well, I guess my next question would be, what, what models did you look at? Or what other nonprofits or municipalities that have done something like that? That you, what models did you use to create the three years?
So it was based on the five-year original, the original agreement was five years, we're two years in. And so I personally thought that just keeping to the same deadline was a good incentive for us to really focus on our major donor pipeline and building this. We're using a model that I've used in the past that's extremely effective in terms of building a network of potential donors. I think that we will see at our giving event in October, November, whenever that is, if we're effective in building this network of relationships with people. It's all based on building connection with people, not asking them for money until you've got that personal connection with them and that they're really resonating with the mission of the organization.
Yeah, actually, Counselor, if I may, I think what would be most helpful for us would be for you to host a gathering of, you know, your friends, family, potential connections to, you know, have some board members from the community foundation, have Natalie come present and explain what we're trying to do and where we're trying to go. You know, so one of the big initiatives that the board is undertaking right now is each board member is going to be hosting at least one of these gatherings. I'm going to be hosting one over at the Trace Margaritas next month, you know, with a number of friends and clients. And, and, you know, I'm telling them, it's like, hey, you know, let's, you know, come, lunch is on me. We'll have some drinks, it'll be a great time. And the only thing I'm asking of you is just listen to us for 20 minutes about what we're trying to do. And that's it.
We don't ask for money.
Yeah, correct. I mean, we're not going to be asking for money at this particular event. We just want them to hear what we have to say. Either we make this pitch and we get them to buy into this idea and consider helping and consider contributing, or we don't. And so my ask of anyone in this room would be, you know, help us in that endeavor. I mean, this is a tremendous opportunity to, to build something that's going to be critically important for the future of the city of Westminster.
Yeah, no, I, basically, I'm really excited about this. I know there are other municipalities that are a little jealous that we have this and they don't. And so I just want to make sure that we do whatever we can to make sure that it's successful.
And I was just going to say that. In the North Metro, we, besides Boulder, are the only community foundation. Northland doesn't have one, Thornton doesn't have one, Arvada doesn't have one, Federal Heights doesn't have one. So it's hard to say what another municipality in North Metro would look like. I do know the Westminster Public Schools Foundation, they're the two full-time staff. Their salaries are picked up by the district. But again, there's not a big model up here with this type of relationship, partnership.
I just remember the mayor of Arvada telling me that she wished that they had something like.
I know.
But yeah, I just, my, my goal is, you know, making. But, yeah, I just, my, my goal is, you know, making sure this is successful. So, thank you for answering my questions.
And that's my cell phone up there, if anybody would like to connect. That's also my email address. And love to see you guys at the golf tournament. I will be doing a formal request with Patty. And we'll keep you in the loop for all our good stuff.
Counselor Damak?
Thanks for showing up, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Some, some may be harsh, but I haven't got to talk to you guys since we talked about redoing the MOU because I believe that was my idea. So, I am concerned to hear that you've lost so many board members. Like, how many board members that were in that meeting where we talked about this? I know OB was there and I know Mike, you were the, on the board at that time. So, what, what's the makeup of the board look like right now?
So, we have Marilyn still, we have Mike, Ryan McCoy, who is with Westminster Public School, is the.
He was there, yep.
Okay, Brian, Brian Dase, he's still there, OB.
Not too much since.
Mary Lee Menard is our new secretary. And Nancy Hamilton is our new treasurer.
Both of whom are very impressive.
Very, very impressive.
And Carol Beach just decided it was time for him to hang up his, his volunteer shingles, so to speak. Karen, as, I think you were on when Karen.
She left, yeah.
When she left.
What about Mike Littsow?
Mike Littsow, he was on five different boards and he thought he couldn't dedicate.
Really bad at being retired.
Yeah, he's really bad about being retired. He just was spread kind of thin. So, and, and so, yeah, so we lost Mike and, and Carol.
So, I appreciate what Tomas was saying, I do, I mean, I think that it's good that you guys came back still with the same time limit and just kind of adjusted. I think I would have, I would have been less happy if, if it was, you know, extending it out double time because I don't think that was in town, what we talked about. So, it's just kind of, do you, to Counselor Hart's point, you feel like this gives you enough runway to kind of take it to that next level?
Yeah, and, and, and actually, one of the things that I want to speak to that perhaps doesn't get talked about enough is that, you know, Natalie's doing a very good job for us in terms of laying all the foundation for us to get to where we need to be for this big event that we're planning for October. I mean, there's, there's a lot of work that went into the rebranding, there's a lot of work in terms of organizing these gatherings that the board members are putting together. And, you know, Natalie is behind the scenes, putting all of this together, keeping us on task and keeping the, the train running on time. I, I want to make it clear that we're not relying upon her for, for everything. I mean, the board's going to have to make this go ultimately. And, and I think one of the things that is special about this board is that everyone who's there, especially a lot of the new members, I mean, they're wholly invested in this. And, and, and there's a sense of purpose that in talking with people who've been around longer than I have with the organization was missing for quite some time. So, you know, there, I, I, I am excited about what we're doing. And, you know, I'm so excited and I'm willing to invest significant amount of, of, of personal capital and, you know, both in terms of my own money and also my own connections. I mean, I'm, I'm putting a lot of risk here to make this thing go.
And time.
Yeah, and time. And, and so, you know, what I would suggest to you all is that, you know, the bet is not just on, on Natalie, but to your point, Dave, and I, and that's why I think your, 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 your questions are important. You know, you're really betting on the board to make this thing go too. And I think we have the right board to go do it.
And who was, where my questions were going to go, so you beat me to it because I think board vestment and these things are critical with a nonprofit. The only other thing, I like the new logo, I think that turned out pretty nice.
Thank you.
Disappointed not to see legacy in there, but, and that, but to that point, that was one of the things that I think is important to the community because of how this foundation came about. I mean, it's really former mayor Nancy Hiles thing. And so, how, like, with the new vision, how are we honoring the past vision and making sure that that maintains? Like, I'm glad to hear you're bringing back some bigger events. Like, when I first got into this arena, one of the biggest things that you could go to was the Legacy Wine Tasting. You know, that was the, the to-do, to-go-to in Westminster for a long time. So, I'm just kind of curious on that point because I know that was something that we left as a conversation when I was still on the board.
When, if you visit our wonderful new website, the section on history is very clear about the genesis of the organization and Mayor Hiles' inspiration to get it going. The golf tournament is still very much in her honor. So, I think that the connection to Nancy Hile will continue forever because she was really the inspiration behind getting this operation going.
And I think that's why we named the, the major donor, the Legacy Trust with that. If you'll see, there's some words, like, for generations to come, that were very much her words that are added in, that are still reiterated in the branding, the rebranding, and things of that nature. So, I think we very much tried to capture that spirit. You know, I know, it, it, you keep legacy, degenerate community, I know, it, it was, it was quite the, it was a hard decision.
We talked about it for probably an hour and a half last meeting I went through, so.
Yeah, we did, we talked about it for a little, we talked through, through March, so.
Many more hours.
Well, I'm glad to see that that's still part of it because that was important in my mind, so. But I appreciate the, the, the work that you've put in, in the last twelve months and before that. So, thank you for answering my questions.
Counselor Zady?
Just wanted to say and concur with all the points that you've made that, and I'm a little biased, right, because I'm a board member. But what I've seen from when I started on the board to what it's, what it is now is like, night and day, it's unbelievable amount of talent, the leadership, the execution, all of it, it's great. Going through that rebranding was great because I'm on the board of lots of other nonprofits and a lot of them are going through the struggles that we were struggling with six months ago where rebranding might be, you know, on the table because nonprofits all across the board right now in Colorado are hurting. Many of them will be closing in the next year. None of them are sustainable, not none of them, very few are sustainable. And that's whether, because with a lot of federal funds that are now no longer there.
They are from.
Right, it's a huge, huge issue and a lot of nonprofits that we know today won't be around in twelve months. So, this was necessary, this whole effort was necessary. And the fact that there is a deadline is necessary because it does give that incentive to get self-sustaining because that is the, that is the story of the day with all the nonprofits in the state. Are you sustainable or, or were you dependent on the federal funds or state funds? So, it's really important and I'm just really proud of the work that you guys have done.
And, you know, to shore up a little bit, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well, just to say, Natalie, I do like you. Well, thanks, Christine. But I have a trouble with using taxpayer money for nonprofits because I think the taxpayer, I don't think it's compassionate because taxpayers should choose what nonprofits they want to support. I'm a part of a nonprofit with my church. I know my church has plenty of money to back up a lot of things, but I just don't think it's compassionate when everyone else, I think people are overtaxed and it just, it causes more people to need a nonprofit. You know, the public money paying for all this all the time. So, I'm, I'm not for it, sorry to tell you.
Anyone else? I think I heard if I read correctly, we're for their plan? Yes, 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 yes.
Forth and Prosper, thank you so much.
And we come back on the eighth for the official vote, is that correct?
Yep.
All right.
Thanks.
I don't want to mess anything up, Abby.